Are we figured out anything about public comment, or is it still the?
Kind of email process.
We have a slight difference.
So in the sessions, oh, go ahead, Angela. So one thing we did was increase the time that people can submit public comments, so they can submit public comment up until noon. The day of the meeting. And in addition, I think we were going to say there's public comment during each item. So I don't know if that's going to work, but that was the plan, so. Those are the changes.
Hi, guys. It's six o'clock. Do you want to start?
I'm sorry, Michelle, did you say you're ready to start?
Yes.
Is Paul joining us tonight, do you know?
I don't think so. He had a family emergency.
Okay, are we ready to get going, everybody? Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 16th meeting of the Reno Planning Commission. Let's start off with the pledge of allegiance. My dog is behind me, so I don't want to hit him. Commissioner Gower, you want to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you so much. Michelle, can we have a roll call, please?
Okay, John Marshall?
Here.
Peter Gower?
Here.
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Arthur Munoz?
Here.
This is absent. Alex Veltow?
Here.
Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
Arthur Munoz?
Here.
This is absent. Alex Veltow?
Here.
Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Michelle. Moving on to item number three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
We did not receive any public comment for this item.
Great, thank you. Item number four, approval of minutes from the August 19th meeting. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Commissioner Munoz, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Veltow, a second.
Great. Michelle, do you want to take a roll call vote?
Kathleen Taylor?
Hi.
John Marshall?
Hi.
Peter Gower?
Stain.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Alex Veltow?
Yes.
Thank you. Wait, can we take one more, just a little break before we start the public hearings? I need to, we have a little technical issue going on at the moment.
Sure. Let us know when you're ready.
Okay. Madam Chair, I think we're ready to go. Madam Chair, can you hear me? I think we're ready to go.
I can. You ready?
Yes.
Okey dokey. Moving on to item number five, agenda item number five, 5.1, public hearings. This is for possible action recommendation to City Council, resolution number 02-20, case number LDC 21-00001. 441 Chaney Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. Michelle, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Yes, just one moment.
Hi, yes. Do I share my screen, Michelle, or is the presentation on the city then?
Go ahead and share your screen, please. Carrie, you can start whenever you're ready. You have 15 minutes for your presentation.
Great. Thanks so much. I'm Carrie Rorneyer, for the record. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owners and developers of 441 Chaney Street. We are requesting a master plan amendment and zoning map amendment. Draw attention to your eyes with the image in the center of the screen. You can see there is a vacant site at the northwest corner of Chaney and Wilson. And with this zoning and master plan amendment, we are looking to develop a nice infill project. So I first want to take you through the zoning and master plan request, and then tell you a little bit, and for the public who's out there, what the intentions are. So there are two parcels associated with tonight's land use case. The parcel at 447 Chaney Street belongs to Mr. Ron Lewis, who is part of our applicant. There are no changes intended for that parcel at this time. But that same site that I showed you in the previous slide, on the right-hand side at 441 Chaney, that vacant parcel, right now it's really attracting illegal dumping. It's also a site known for illegal parking of motorhomes, and it requires considerable maintenance. So I think what's different about this request in the Wells Avenue Plan versus maybe other development requests is that this is an initiated project by residents in the immediate vicinity versus some outside actor developer who'd be coming into the neighborhood. So really, this reflects the values and the character of the residents currently living in this location. Also, I want to point out that this site is sharing its block with Taco John's Fast Food and the Wells Avenue suburban corridor, suburban commercial corridor, which is really well discussed in the staff report. Across from that is the 7-Eleven, and there's a wellness center. So it's really a commercial in nature right there. As well as across Wilson is some higher density, architecturally significant townhomes and bungalow-style development done by the same architect that is proposing this project, that's Jack Hawkins. He worked at the time with Baron Hirschberger in 2008, when the zoning was higher. At that site, it was MF 21, and at this site we're looking at, it was a community parcel. So we really just want to extend what you're seeing on the four parcels across the street. So here's the zoning map as it is proposed. So with a master plan of suburban mixed use, we could go in with, say, MF 30 or mixed residential, 30 units per acre. You have two community commercial parcels on this block on the side of the alley. We'd be looking at that orange or burnt orange color as a transitional zone. And the map currently doesn't reflect what's on the ground. So there's a 10-unit apartment complex across the street. There's some higher density development in the northeast corner. There's the townhomes that I referenced previously. So really, we're feeling like this request is much more in line with what's existing on and is non-conforming in that area. So looking at that Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan, I've made a little box around the proposed transitional zoning site, and then you can see with the stars, all the areas in non-conformance. So all of those are higher density residential than is currently shown on this map. That includes the Veterans Guest House and 700 Locust. Here's a little bit closer look at those things. You can see that the site we're looking at is actually surrounded by higher density residential development. So we're requesting MF 30 as a sensible transition between that Wells Avenue suburban corridor and the deeper residential as you go into the neighborhood. And I just want to take a moment to tell people that density, if you've walked the area, if you know this particular block, then you know that density doesn't have to be imposing. It can really fit in with the beloved walkable, bikeable nature of the Wells Avenue neighborhood. It's convenient and a good use of public transportation and public infrastructure. The site is currently vacant, so we're not displacing or removing any existing structures. The applicants would like to build five duplexes. And duplexes are great because they can be flexible in design, so it can be 10 individual units. It could be five live-work spaces or five multi-generational housing spaces. The units could include micro units, which are more affordable. They wouldn't necessarily be tagged as affordable housing, but they would be more affordable based on their size. And also because solar votage is a priority for this project. And so the energy costs would be much lower. The whole site itself, we're talking about a building footprint of 30% building and 40% landscaping. So adding a lot of new street trees is an opportunity here. You saw the site, what it looks like. Landscaping and steel pergolas add visual interest where there currently is none, especially at this gateway into the Wells Avenue neighborhood. We feel like this project and the zoning is in line with the master plan and the land development code changes that are happening in Reno. We've outlined a lot of the policies, and so did the staff report, did a very good job of this, showing how that were compatible and aligning with where the city has been going and how the city has changed in the 13 years since the Wells Avenue Plan was adopted. So it's compatible infill, it doesn't detract from the neighborhood, rather it enhances its higher-density housing where we need it in the urban core. We're proposing gradual building height and mass, so that the scale feels very much like what you've experienced on Chaney Street with the bungalows in front. And we're prioritizing infill and redevelopment where it's an efficient use of the city. So it's also sustainable, it's a low-impact development, it's a green design. And not a lot of the projects that come into the city right now for permit have a lot of those features, like 100% net energy production. So what we're looking at here is the example from just across Wilson. These are the townhomes that architect Jack Hawkins built. These would be along the alleyway and similar in size. And we just want to show you that density is not always imposing. Here, you have 450 square foot unit on the ground floor. That could be tucked behind garage. Above that, 1,000 square foot unit, one bedroom, possibly two, with windows placed high enough so that they are not invading any privacy of the neighbors. You have private open space to the use of patios that take advantage of the Mount Rose views and passive solar. And then cohesive landscaping, so adding to the recreational element by having a little pocket park just for that site. The site also could include parking that accommodates every unit. So it would not put any additional cars on the street. We heard from the neighborhood meeting that that was a concern. We're also helping the neighborhood go through a process of requesting designated parking along the streets for the units, so that would help out. But really, thinking about where Reno has come and where it is going, and we feel like this development, again, it is the residents of that location proposing creative, flexible, innovative designs. They want new construction that fits the unique site conditions and also meets the changing demographics and market that we're currently experiencing. We think it's a great project. I'm here for questions. I'm here with Jack Hawkins, resident and architect. Say a few words.
Hi, Jack Hawkins, for the record, developer and architect with Chris Riley and Piper Stremmel, that are my neighbors. We all live within a stone's throw of this site. We are excited about this project. I've been in the neighborhood for 14 years. I own the little bungalow that's in the screen right now, and did the townhome development behind. And my wife and I still live in one of the townhomes, and we've loved living in the neighborhood. I worked at the Stremmel Gallery. My office is in that building, and I've been in that building for 20 years. I never get outside of about a mile radius, so this is my hood. Some of the projects that I've worked on in the Wells Avenue area, or midtown area, the Stremmel Gallery Building, Louie's Restaurant, Adon Center, 777, the old Maytan Music Building, and then the old Pirate Tattoo Building, which was probably the ugliest building on Virginia Street, which now has Rum Sugar Lime and a pizza place and a coming soon brew club. So this is where I like to practice when I can, and we're super excited about the area. We feel like it's, I've looked at a piece of property there for seven, eight years, ever since the recession came in. Two developers have owned that property and could not make it pencil. We're looking long-term. We want to, I've been invested in that area for 13, 14 years now. I fully intend to stay there at least another 10 or 15 years till I can't get up the stairs of my townhome. And so, you know, we're, nobody could be more invested in the quality of the neighborhood and what we think the neighborhood, you know, can become. We like what's there existing, we just want to make it even better than it already has. I think with development and with increased density, there's always a fear that, oh, my gosh, it's going to ruin things. But neighborhoods can be improved by development. I'll give you a couple of examples. I was involved with Adon Center, which is on Center Street, it was eight townhomes. And that, when I moved to Reno 30 years ago, it was a pizza place. And then it went out of business, and it was a derelict property and lot for a long time. Couple of developers came in to develop that site, and we put eight townhomes in there, and it totally changed Center Street. You know, it spurred other development and other good development, with the brasserie across the street, the Crystal Springs water, Guy Demby's building. And then that development slowly crept down the street, all the way down to what you have now with Patagonia and down to downtown. So Center Street, so my point is that development can actually spur other good development. And if you look at the city as a quilt, and you have a hole in it, and you can come in with a really nice patch that matches the rest of the city, but also has some vibrancy to it, you can make the quilt better than just holes everywhere. And we feel like right now this property is a hole in our neighborhood, and it's been a hole for a long time. And we want to patch it, so I'll let somebody else talk.
That's perfect. Well, we're here for questions. The staff report makes a strong justification for all of the findings, but we're available for additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Brooke, do you have a presentation?
Hello, this is Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner, for the record. Hopefully, Michelle, can you access my camera or let me in? Should be the issue.
Just one moment, please.
Perfect. Good evening, planning commission. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner, for the record. Michelle, if you can start my presentation, and go ahead and move forward with it.
Just one moment, please.
So as we look at this, one thing to remember is, though we have seen a project associated with this site, this particular request is not for that project, it is for a zoning and master plan change. And so that's, we will, staff analysis was strictly towards that zoning map and master plan amendment and not the particular project that was proposed. Next slide, please, Michelle. It was brought to our attention that there has been some discrepancy or some different changes in our language as far as the proposed motion. The old language, which is associated with the staff report, the new language is basically, says the same thing, but in a little clearer manner and resolves some of that. I would suggest if the Planning Commission does move forward to approve this project tonight using the new language it is proposed, and we would anticipate this would be the language we would see on future projects coming forward. Next slide, please. The applicant did a good job of sort of defining the really immediate neighborhood, showing the photos of the site. We do have the large VA hospital associated with here, where we see the impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods via that VA hospital down Wells Ave. We have that commercial corridor. You can see that South Virginia, which is another major commercial corridor, is in close proximity to this site also. So this is a site that is really within close proximity of two of our major commercial corridors that we have going on in the area. If you look around the surroundings, right, and you see the parcels, we have several parcels within that MF 14 that range from about 7,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet, as was noted by the applicant, along Wilson Ave., and especially to the east of Wilson Ave., as it goes up against that commercial. We have several units that are over that MF 14 zoning, and would be probably closer to the MF 30 zoning along Wilson. As we get down towards more of where Wells and South Virginia intersect, we actually see that zoning converting to an MF 30 in that zoning. Next slide, please. So what is being requested, once again, is a zoning amendment. We are looking at that zoning going from an MF 14 to an MF 30. The site is 44 acres, so that would allow, the MF 14 allows six units. The MF 13 would allow 13 units on that particular site. And then we are also looking at a master plan amendment to go to the MX to the SMU. The MF 30 zoning is conforming under that SMU master plan land use designation. Per our master plan amendment, or per the master plan, it's referenced the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan. So we have another sub-level or sub-layer within this. So in the same time, we would be looking at that master plan amendment to go from a mixed residential 14 to a mixed residential 30, which is similar to the zoning and would match the zoning on that. Next slide, please. So I want to give a little bit more zoning context as we look at the overall zoning, and especially that transition of zoning. So if we look to the far left of the screen, or to the west here, the striped red area would be considered our mixed-use area. That is a higher intensity use, with the residential, commercial, light industrial happening in that. As we start to move to the east with the MF 30 zoning coming along there, and interspersed with some professional office uses. Then the red strip down the middle is that Wells Avenue Commercial Corridor. And then we move to that Wells Avenue Neighborhood, which is the MF 14. And then further going all the way to the east, you start all the way to the east, you start to see an FF6, which is a single-family 6,000 square foot lot. So there's real, it's individual, single-family zoning going that way. So as we look, it is, it is a transition of where we are coming down from zoning to that community commercial, which is actually more intense than the MF13, and then as we go into the neighborhoods again, we're going down to MF14. As staff analyzed this, that transition along Wilson, there is the opportunity to increase that density and support infill by looking at this, and it is reflective of that MF30 zoning that we have going on, on the other side of the community commercial. The community commercial does allow residential development. There is no limit on the number of units on that, obviously, parking and a number of other things would start to limit how that site could be used. We get feel that the MF30 was appropriate over the community commercial zoning, because it does limit a number of those commercial uses that could start to have impacts on those surrounding MF14 neighborhoods. And then the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan also applies some other standards and limits additional commercial uses there. Next slide, please. So this is just the request, as we've shown, so we are looking at that MF14, to that MF30 as was just shown, that is reflective of what we kind of were seeing on the other side off that, that community commercial and being a transition area really into the MF14 neighborhood. Next slide, please. So that, as I've stated before, that MF30 is conforming under the suburban mixed use. As you notice, that suburban mixed use is consistent with what we have down the Wells Corridor, and actually what we have moving over to that mixed use area. And so it conforms with that, and it's just not spot or master planning that. As we look at those underlying policies of that, especially supporting those surrounding neighborhoods and a number of those things, and how we look at our suburban mixed use and its definition, it is very consistent with the current uses in that area, and also what we could potentially see the development in that area. Once again, that Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan is referenced by that, that master plan zoning, and that would also be modified to reflect that. Next slide, please. There was much public outreach and comment on this. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting. They noticed that by mail, 750 feet from the project site. It was held via Zoom meeting. The presentation of the zoning and the request was given, and also the, the project that is proposed for that site. There were several questions, and the applicant did a good job of sort of answering those questions and moving forward. Staff was there to also help to support from the zoning and the request of that. We had, certainly there were comments in opposition and in support of that. We also had several comments that have come in and have been forwarded to the planning commission. Those, also, there are several that in support of this project and others in opposition. The ones in opposition mainly revolved around traffic, parking issues, and potential impacts of height on that. So the anticipated city council after the decisions made tonight would be the October 14, 2020, with what was presented by the applicant. The staff can make all applicable findings and does recommend approval of the project. I am available for questions as necessary. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Brooke. This is a public hearing, so I will bring it back to the commission for disclosures. Commissioner Geller?
Good morning, Chair. Commissioner Geller, I spoke with the applicant's representative and project owners and architects, read and received, received and read emails, and visited the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures?
Commissioner Munoz? Going to call our new Commissioner Marshall, but you're having a little problem.
Same disclosures.
Mr. Melso?
The same disclosures as well.
Mr. Marshall?
Thank you for that forbearance. I visited the site, met with the applicant's representative and the owner, discussed with a opponent, and I think, and read the emails.
Thank you. I visited the site, received and read emails, talked with the applicant's representative, and visited, I think I said visited the site already. So, Michelle, do we have public comment?
So all public comment that was received prior to 5:00 PM was sent to the planning commission and is part of the record. We did receive three voicemails that we will play for you, so just one moment.
Hi, my name is Judy Austin. I live at 420 Toma. I'm calling about the public notice to change the zoning from mixed neighborhood, Wells Avenue Neighborhood, multifamily 14, to suburban mixed use, Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan, multifamily 30. There's an APN number here, it is 013-115-11 and 013-115-08. I would just like to say, why are we living in a conservation area and then not conserving what we have? We don't want super-duper multifamily back here. We would like to keep it as small as possible, so my vote is no. My phone number, 775-333-0974. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charles Karstens, K-A-R-S-T-E-N-S. I live at 430 Toma, T-H-O-M-A, Street, Reno, Nevada. This is in regards to the rezoning of the project on the corner of Wilson and Cheney. Hey, if that place, if that thing goes through, it'll completely ruin my neighborhood, and my family has lived in this house right now for 91 years. I was born in this house. Please, please don't rezone it and change the zoning, please! And I don't know the project number. It's on the corner of Wilson and Cheney. And it comes up to your meeting on Monday at 6 o'clock at night, and I wished I could be there, I would. Please, give this some second thought, please!
Madam Chair, just for the record, any items or any public comment that is received after 5:00 PM will be forwarded to the planning commission and to staff for the record.
Great. Do we have one more voicemail?
There are three. We have one more.
Yes, this is Nikki Brown, and I'm calling about Plan Number LDC21-00001. The 441 Cheney Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendment. I want to say that I'm very opposed to it. I think it'll probably bring down our property values, and Cheney is one of the loveliest streets, and I just hate to see it go from, you know, single-family or two families to a huge sprawling complex. I think it will not be very good for the neighborhood, and it's probably already done, but I don't like it. I think we're overbuilding, and we're going to end up with a lot of places that are going to turn into slums with all this building, building, building. Anyway, that's my opinion. I'm opposed to changing it from 15 to 30 family dwelling on Cheney, on the corner of Cheney and Wilson. Thank you. My number is 707-272-1566. I live on Toma Street, and I had a house here for 10 years. All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Do we have any other public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, we will close public comment and bring it, bring it back to the commission for questions. Who would like to start?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I think, I have a question to start with Brooke. During the applicant's presentation, they noted that there were a number of existing developments in this area that exceeded the current zoning. I'm wondering if there's a little history on how, and some of those developments, I believe, are relatively recent, I mean, within the past 10, 15 years. What's the history of the zoning in this area to the point where, in the past, there are developments that are more closely aligned with the requested zoning as opposed to what we see as the current zoning there?
Yeah, that was something staff also looked at. So this, that zoning has, as the Wells Avenue Neighborhood came in, that zoning went to that MF14 at that time, prior to that, it was much higher. There were portions that were MF21, there were portions that were CC along that Wells Corridor, those went to that MF14 background 2017. Staff mainly concentrated along the east side of that, looking at the density to the east side of that, of Wilson Ave, so they were looking at more consistency of what was being proposed than what was actually in the neighborhood and what may or may not be nonconforming due to that. What we found kind of along that Wilson Ave, especially to the east side, which would be comparable to what is being proposed, is there were several units that were multifamily units that were anywhere from 10 units on a half acre to right around in that area, but several that were above that MF14 zoning that had been applied. So many, when that MF14 zoning came in, it had been established before and became nonconforming at that time. So what we're really seeing there is a zoning change as it, as it goes to the east side of Wilson. Now, those interior ones, we do have some unique situations there where we have, there are some townhome units which have common area open space and some things like that, so there's two different configurations that we're seeing, a little bit more creative density. Overall, the density is that meeting that MF14, but a little bit more creatively. So the applicant may have additional, they did a little bit more additional, and being in the neighborhood for 14 years would have probably a little bit more additional history of how that may come forward.
Okay. Thank you, Brooke. So I guess I'll follow that up with a question for the applicant. Kind of along those lines, you know, a lot of the questions that came in from the public were concerned about this idea, you know, extreme density and massive complexes. Can you, and I think I read it in the staff report, but can you just maybe explain to me, under the current zoning, which is not single-family, it's actually multifamily zoning, what's the delta, just in the, you know, extreme example, of how many units could be placed on the site now versus how many units could be placed on the site if the zoning is changed?
I got this. I got this. So we're looking, right now, there's one existing house on the two parcels that are combined 0.41 acres. Total in that area could be 13 units. Like I mentioned, the parcel at 447 has no development plans at this time. Under the proposed zoning, we could have 9.6 units on the vacant parcel with a density bonus 10. So we're not talking about a mid-rise block type configuration. This is, this is pretty small scale.
Well, and I guess how many could go on there?
Oh, I'm sorry, four would be available to be put on the vacant parcel, and our neighbor at 447, that could have an additional unit in the back. So that could be six total, going up to 13 max.
So, so the maximum not, you know, regardless of what any proposed development would be, the acceptance of this change would increase by a maximum of seven units above what's currently there?
Correct. For the record, too, this is Jack Hawkins. When, when, when I moved into that neighborhood, the vacant lot was zoned MF, oh, sorry, CC, and the house immediately to the east of Wilson, for whatever reason, that was zoned MF30. So then when the zone change came in, the overlay, that's when it all switched back to MF14.
Okay, so that, the Wells Avenue overlay in that project changed the zoning, so that explains why some of the units that are there have a higher density than what we're seeing now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I think that answered that question. And then I guess the other one, maybe for Brooke, we also heard some concerns in public comment about parking. What is, are there any, I know we've got, you know, minimum and maximum parking and that throughout the area, but is there a requirement, what's the parking requirement on-street and off-street that would be required for development under this particular zoning?
So as they proposed it, that would be our standard code of the two-per-unit. In that MF30, we do allow half of the required parking sites to be met by on-street parking. I think what we're really, what we're seeing here with the parking being an issue here is largely related to the Veterans Hospital, and they are a federal agency. We do not regulate their parking and how many they can park. We have not done an analysis of their parking there, but we anticipate they're probably underparked for their use and the size of their facility. And we're seeing that probably more, more than the neighborhood or a particular development having the impact, it's probably that larger use in that area that is, that is creating that parking impact in that area.
Okay, so then, just to bring these last two questions together, based on the additional, the maximum additional number of units if the zone change was placed in there, and if each one of those units was required two parking spaces, so that would be, and half of those could classify, could be classified as street parking, we'd be looking at a maximum of potentially seven additional parking spaces, the way the city would attribute it to this development. Is it seven or is it three? I'm just trying to, again, we're not looking at a project here, we're looking at a zone change, and we have to look at, at the maximum impact. So if we would be increasing by seven units potentially with this change, then potentially that would open up the need for how many additional street parking areas that, you know, in essence, could be an impact from this project onto the neighborhood?
You know, it's really hard, because we don't, I mean, may have proposed the project, I didn't analyze that project, because the request is zoning and master plan amendment. So those could go up to studio apartments, that could require one, they could go up to three bedrooms, right? So that could be a real mix of how that parking looks. As we've kind of currently proposed, we would, meaning half of that onsite, if we say we have an average of two parking stalls required per unit, they would require 20, or 20 parking stalls for their, for 10 deflectors at two per unit. That would be half, that they, they would have to have half onsite, 10 onsite, and then it could be up to 10 on street parking. What is unique on this is they've really limited their access, they have, a number of their parking access comes off that alleyway, and so we're not seeing drives that disrupt that, that street parking. Unique parcel also is that it has parking both along Cheney and Wilson, and so we, you know, that parking along their frontage, and that parking along the frontage has to be, those 10 have to be within that frontage, right? Not, they can't put it on the neighbors or impact that. But, Brooke?
Okay. All right, thank you, Brooke. I think that's what I was trying to get at, was that there's, you know, the parking impact of a potential development here, just to address what had been brought up by the public. So that was the question that I was looking at.
Staff knowledge is that the impact would be minimal from this development.
And it's limited to a site that currently doesn't have any attributed site parking to it, so all of that frontage would be part of this, whatever development would occur on this could use both the Wilson and the Cheney frontage, as well as the alley access?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that. Madam Chair, I'll see if anything else I have for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other questions for staff of the applicant?
Commissioner Munoz, I have a quick question, and I just want clarification here. So I know that we are approving the zoning change, not the
So I know that we are approving the zoning change, not the project that was kind of presented to us today, so what is to stop the developer, what is to stop you from, once we give the okay, or if we approve the change to MF-30, from everything being changed over and a higher-density building being put in there? I mean, it seems like we're kind of, kind of writing a blank check here, is what it feels like, for lack of a better term.
Can I ask about one?
So the allowed units is going to be the same. If it is .44 acres, it is going to be 13 units. So they can arrange, those could be arranged in several different ways. They have proposed several duplexes. That could be done in one building. It could be, but we, the overall impact would be similar. So what we're, we're seeing, we also have our infill standards and another of other standards that help to protect that surrounding neighborhood as far as some of the setbacks and some of those other items there. And so even though we're looking at a project, we're really, when staff analyze it, we analyze the overall density and what the zoning means, not the project. And so we wouldn't see any additional units nor additional impacts. It would just be a different configuration on how they did that.
Thank you. And then one other question, if, I understand, sorry, I believe it's to be for you, Brooklyn. MF-14 height allowances for buildings is, excuse me, I've written it down.
35 feet for MF-14, and it's 45 feet for the MF-30. So there's one-story difference, which potentially could have other, you know, shading impacts and stuff like that. They are on a corner with two streets, and they have an alley in the back, which helps minimize some of those overall impacts and differences between properties.
Thank you. And then for you, Carrie, really quick, what's your proposal, what we saw today, what would be the maximum height for those buildings that you were proposing, if, say, that was to go through?
Yes, so 35 feet is what the design we showed. That's the max height. And I want to say that they're very, I mean, this was designed, the zoning request is designed around the project in this case, just from our end. Obviously, that's not how things work on the city's end. But these, because they are proposed by the neighbors, you know, they have a very invested interest in making sure the design is a quality project, it is a stone's throw from their house.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marshall, are you trying to get there?
I am, I'm trying to unmute. Thank you. Brooke, why go from MX to SMU for the initial master planning designation? Can we go to a MF-30 on mixed-use?
We could, we could have gone to an MF-30. The SMU, the MF-30 is conforming under that SMU, and the surrounding master plan is an SMU. Jeff felt that the consistency of that, holding the consistency of that master plan, and that really that, the policies and sort of guidance related to the suburban mixed-use is consistent with that sort of transition versus the strict MF-30 Applied Master Plan on that.
Okay. And that's kind of, I think, underlines my next question, which is probably more for Carl, which is, you know, really what we're saying is, you know, with that multi-use, excuse me, with going to the SMU, you're really trying to say that that parcel kind of belongs to the Wells Avenue side of, of the planning, you know, divide between the, you know, more of the neighborhood versus more associated with the street and the Wells Avenue kind of more, you know, mixed-use area. But we're doing it by just really isolating these two parcels and saying, you know, we want to rezone these two parcels, but the conclusion really seemed to be that everything along, you know, west of Wilson really should be this designation. So I guess my question for Carl is, is it, you know, if we make the findings here on this parcel, are we really saying that we can, you know, is that going to be a precedent that will be hard to be distinguished for any other property on that, you know, the eastern side of that block, or, you know, the parcel just west of Wilson? Up, you know, up and down the whole, the whole length of Wilson? Does that?
Right, no, I hear it. And, yeah, we definitely set a precedent, but it's consistent with our master plan in terms of, you know, infill development within our core. So, you know, I think that's, that's one of the tenets of a master plan, but I think you're right. Once you open that door, then it does set a precedent, and I think other developers may want to piggyback on that decision.
And Carl, to stay with you, you know, this really, for me, it's a, I think it's a, I'm, I'm for the general change, and, you know, it's suburban info, it fills a lot of our master planning goals, but the process is a little, you know, we're not, we're not taking a look at a neighborhood and trying to decide where that zone should be, we're really focusing on, in this exercise, these two lots. And so are you concerned at all that we're subject to a, you know, spot zoning claim? Really just zeroing in on these two lots when the justification really is, you know, a broader kind of things west of Wilson should be part of that Wells Avenue influenced area?
I think that this decision would be defensible against a spot zoning accusation, so I think I can defend it.
Because we've got two parcels, or?
Only two parcels, yeah.
Okay.
And then I had, I had a question. Would this, this is probably for Angela, would this be subject to a tentative map? Would they have to come into the tentative map?
If they build apartments, they will not trigger a tentative map. If they want to make these owner-occupied, such as a condo, they will require a tentative map, and this will be back before Planning Commission. One other item, just for clarification, within our master plan, we also have this Wells Avenue neighborhood plan, and that is embedded in our master plan. There's a table specific to master planning within Wells Avenue, and it says, if you have a zoning of MF-30, the appropriate master plan is suburban mixed-use. It does not say you have the option to do multifamily neighborhood or mixed-use, it specifically says, if you have an MF-30 zoning, the appropriate master plan that conforms with that is the suburban mixed-use. And again, that is specific to the Wells Avenue neighborhood plan.
So if we did an MX, it'd be inconsistent with that portion of the master plan?
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Let me just, all right, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? Hey, Carrie, I have a question. You said that there was a neighborhood meeting on Zoom. How well was that attended?
We had about nine neighbors dial in, if you will, and it was about three in support. Some neighbors will never suggest that this is the right fit, but I think everybody appreciated the project and the level of detail that the owner or applicants want to bring to the neighborhood because they are residents. But, yeah, it was about nine, and I'd say it went about half and half. The biggest concern seemed to be parking, and that's where we got that direction to work on is street designated parking. But that's a separate, separate issue we're working through.
Great. Commissioners, want to bring it back for some discussion? Is there any more questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'll just start out the discussion. I think kind of the whole, whole intent of my line of questions for staff and applicant was trying to get to what Commissioner Munoz was saying, that obviously this is a master plan change that we're putting a recommendation forward to and not an actual project. And so I think what I, the questions that I was asking, we're trying to understand exactly how big of an impact this would be on the neighborhood, and what I'm hearing is it's six units, which is an incredibly small impact even on a single-family neighborhood. And when you compare that to how this, this particular project checks off so much of our master plan objectives in terms of infill and walkable neighborhoods and, you know, the, the appropriate densification, to me, it's, it's a, it's a project that I wish we had more of. And again, regardless of whether it happens to be this particular configuration or some other configuration, I think a vacant lot in the middle of an existing neighborhood, one block off of one of our retail corridors, should be developed in a manner that's, you know, consistent with this, and I think 13 units versus six units is the appropriate way to go. So that was my discussion items. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Thank you. You know, just to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Johnson's comments, this one parcel is, is, you know, six, six units and maybe four on-street parking, you know, assignments. It's, it's minimal, but I think we have to recognize that if we approved this, then we are setting a precedent that we probably can't walk away from. So really, in effect, tonight's decision, in my view at least, is a rezone of all those parcels along Wilson. And so it's not just six. I think, you know, we need to be, to disclose, you know, the, I think to the general public what's really happening here, in my view at least, that we won't be able to say no to other developers on those, you know, other, the back end of those, of that block. And so we're really looking at a neighborhood increase of, you know, however many units times the, you know, per lot, you know, kind of up and down Wilson. So that's in effect what we're doing. I'm okay with that. I'm a little, you know, the process, I don't think is the best one for this, because we're really, the effect of this is a larger rezone than, you know, the real practical effect. Many property owners may not want to do that, so it may never come to that kind of fruition. But I think we need to be, you know, make that conscious decision that that's okay for the neighborhood, because, you know, we want these kind of projects, that's all the reason that Commissioner Johnson ticked off. But I think we need to be, you know, open about what, the net effect of what we're doing. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could follow up on that point, that was one of my concerns, you know, initially, when this was on our agenda several weeks ago, was similar to what Commissioner Marshall raised, is that we essentially have a little pop-out. I mean, if you look at the zoning line right now, it follows the mid-block of the, you know, that block between Wells and Wilson. And so it creates kind of a, almost like an optic situation, and I appreciate Commissioner Marshall's question about the spot zoning. I think the reality of the situation, though, as I look at it, and I kind of disagree with Commissioner Marshall, that it does not result in a de facto rezoning of that whole mid-block along Wilson, because I think there are unique circumstances in each one of these little blocks that, you know, may warrant MF-13 and the appropriate master plan change, and in some cases, not. You know, for me, seeing that it's, you know, it abuts the Taco John's, you've got a pretty high-density multifamily situation to the south there on Wilson and Cheney. So, you know, I think looking at these pockets, if they do come through in the future, just like we have done in this scenario, looking at those site-specific impacts of the zone change and master plan designation change. I don't think it results in a de facto. I think in some ways, it sets maybe a minor precedent, but I don't have that concern after hearing from the attorney and just looking at the context. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Velto, I, I really appreciate that take, Commissioner Gower. It's, you know, as you were kind of explaining why you think this might not create a precedent going forward, I was looking at the map as well, and it does seem like there'd be some differences that make it so it's not just across the board, this would be changing everything along, along Wilson. Either, you know, that said, even if that were the case, I, I tend to think that that's not, not the worst option, but I, I tend to agree with you, Commissioner Gower, and I appreciate you bringing that up and explaining how you think it might not be precedent going forward. That's what I, you know, I, I do like the way that this has been presented, and it seems very, very compelling to me, seeing that all the, all the factors are met, and I'd be able to, to vote in favor. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Velto. So I guess when I looked at this, I was a little hesitant because of some previous projects or zonings that have come before us before and what has happened afterwards. And as much as I love all the design features associated with this, it's not how I can make my decision on this, because it's not a project. However, when I look at what's out there now, it's a vacant lot, and it is, there's nothing there to be torn down, and I don't, it is a unique project around the neighborhood. I'm not sure there's a ton of other projects or spaces that are like this. So if they did come before Planning Commission, they would be looked at differently. I think that the zoning change hopefully will lead, I'm hopeful, will lead to some great design features that we may see, but I do think that this is appropriate, and I think I definitely can make the findings moving forward, so I can be in support of this. And also, I really appreciate it's the maximum, what's the maximum amount of density that's going to be put, or housing, or affect when we look at building changes even without a project. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't see any other Commissioner questions or comments or hands up?
I may to make the motion.
Okay.
May I first ask either Angela or Carl? I don't, I didn't write down the, the motion language, but, and I'm a little confused about the motion in the, I think I can just delete the, the language about and recommend that the City Council do the same. I think that's what you took out. But is it, are we, are we adopting the master plan? Or are we recommending to the City Council that they adopt the master plan?
So it's kind of a two-step, again, Angela, for the record, it's kind of a two-step process. The Planning Commission has a separate resolution that they need to approve, and that is different from the City Council's resolution. So you, you can follow the language that's proposed in the staff report, and that, that's accurate, or if that kind of feels awkward, by approving the, recommending approval of that resolution, that inherently then forwards a recommendation of approval to City Council. So we, and I apologize, we've done it differently in the past, but either way, you're still, you're still correct. There's, there's two motions, though. One is the master plan that's before you, and the second is the zoning.
Got it, thank you. In matter of LDC 21-0001, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to, one, adopt the master plan amendment by resolution, subject to performance review by the Regional Planning Commission, and two, recommend the City Council approve the zoning map, zoning map amendment, amendment by ordinance.
Great, we have a motion.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I will second the motion. I can also make all the findings.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Michelle, can you help us out, please?
Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
John Marshall?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz? Ear muted.
Arthur Munoz, yes.
Alex Velto?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project, and we hope to see lots, or not lots, Good luck with your project, and we hope to see lots, or not lots, we hope to see some nice features there soon.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Michelle, let's move on to 522. This is in regards to case number LDC 21-00002, Sky Vista Storage. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Yes, we will have a presentation from Karen Downs. We're just bringing her into the meeting, just one moment. Karen, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes. And I'm going to try to start my video now, so you can see me. I'm over here. Hi, I'm here, and then I'm also going to share my screen, so you can see my presentation. And I have, let's see, I have two screens here, so let me try to start my slideshow, and let me know if you can see. Are you able to see the presentation?
No.
No. What if I do?
If you are having difficulties, we can bring that up for you.
If you could, that would be great. That probably cut out some problems.
Okay, just one moment.
Thank you.
Okay, you can start any time, and you have fifteen minutes to do your presentations. Just, oh, where'd it go? Hang on. It disappeared.
I can try again, I might not get the share.
We got it, hang on.
Okay, great. Okay, so, hi again, good evening, my name is Karen Downs, I'm with Manhart Consulting, and I'm here representing the project for Sky Vista Storage Special Use Permit, representing the applicant Ron Smith with Sundance Development Group. The project is at the intersection of Sky Vista Parkway and Vista Knoll Parkway. It's an eleven, as you can see here, well, you can't see my screen move, but the total project parcel is eleven point six five acres, and we're looking at a five point one acre disturbed area of that total parcel. Next screen. We have a master plan designation of special planning area and a zoning designation of arterial commercial. And as you'll see, kind of on that northwestern boundary, there is FF6 existing zoning adjacent to that. Next screen. The special planning area we talked about, it's a portion of the Renostead Corridor Joint Plan, and it has a general commercial designation in that zoning. And I think that Brooke will have a little bit more information on that later, if you have questions, on the Renostead Corridor Joint Plan. All right, next slide. So the application before you tonight is a special use permit. There's three different triggers. One is the mini warehouse use, which is a self-storage facility in the AC zone. And then, as we talked about, there is residential adjacency, and we also have fills greater than ten feet. Excellent, thank you. Here is a depiction of the site plan, and we can go through a little bit of the, some details of the project. As I mentioned before, the total parcel size is eleven point six five acres. And then here, what's shown on the site plan before you is that disturbed area of five point one acres. We're looking at a self-storage, or indoor storage facility. The building footprint is eighty-four, about eighty-four thousand square feet. And on the site plan, you see there's the perimeter buildings. Those are proposed as one-story, and those two buildings that are on the interior of the site are two-story buildings. The total leasable space with those two-story buildings is about a hundred and fourteen thousand square feet. The maximum units for this site plan with the parking allowed would be six hundred and sixty units. The final configuration would be with final design of the site. We show thirty-two percent of the disturbed area is landscaped, the requirement is fifteen percent. And then, in addition to that landscaped area, there's also the, about six and a half acres of undisturbed area on the site. I wanted to point out here, on that residential, well, you can't see my portion, on the northeastern portion where that residential adjacency is, we have shown, added a rockery wall there to kind of screen it a little, or add some visual, reduce the visual impacts. So we've added some rockery walls and reduced the grading. There are three areas, two that I want to show you on the site. There's three areas where the max fill is greater than the ten feet, so three acres for this special use permit. One is on that side where the residential adjacency is. The second is, wish I could point, I didn't think about this on the presentation part, but this is on the side that faces the Vista, yeah, you're getting there, the side that faces the Vista Knolls Parkway from behind, and then also a little portion on the corner, the northeast corner of the site. And you'll see, too, on the site plan, the perimeter buildings that are visible from the right-of-way, they are stepped in architecture to provide some visual interest. Do you see some of the units are stepped out a little bit further, and then allows a space for additional landscaping as well? All right, next slide, thank you. So just some highlights of the project. It includes an office and manager's unit, that's a two-story unit, and then again, the one and two-story storage buildings on the site with a maximum of six hundred and sixty units. There's access from Sky Vista Parkway, there'll be the electronic entry with a keypad, and then gated emergency secondary access. We've provided some enhanced building design that'll have a stucco finish on those exterior units, a two-tone paint scheme with earth tone colors, an entry tower, and some metal awnings on the office building, and then also that stepped architecture that we discussed earlier. We've done all this so it's compatible with that proposed adjacent residential development. There's the building design, increased setbacks, landscaping, the rockery walls, and then the hours of operation are within those residential adjacency hours. Also compatible with commercial development in the area, such as that Walmart commercial development. Overall, this is a low-impact use related to traffic, sewage, and water that will not overburden the existing infrastructure. Next slide, got some conceptual elevations here. This is the office at the entry gate, shows that tower and the awning. Next slide. And then here's the kind of stepped buildings that you would see, there's the entry at Sky Vista, and then the elevation from Sky Vista Parkway that you would see from the right-of-way. And then next, those are the, the highest, the first one is the one-story building from the interior of the site, not from the, what you would see from the right-of-way, and then the bottom one is the two-story interior building. And with that, of course, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, of course, and I think Brooke has some additional information, too.
Great, thank you. Brooke, you have a presentation?
Yes, yes, I do. I, can you hear me better now than before? I called in on the phone this.
Yes, it sounds a little better.
Okay. If you can start my application or the presentation, sorry. I'm getting a weird echo back. Next slide, please. So Brooke Oswald, associate planner for the record. Sorry, I'm having issues with, I put it on the phone, and now my voice is coming back at me. So first, let's look at the project location. It's in close proximity to Lemon Drive and Sky Vista, so we have freeway access in close proximity to the site, and then the arterial Sky Vista roadway that connects the neighborhoods to the northwest and the commercial center to the east. We have a large hillside behind the site, there's a natural drainage that runs down the site, and then, as was mentioned from the applicant's representative, they are proposing to build on a portion of the site, not the entire site. We have the large Walmart facility, and across the street, we're starting to see some industrial development and other developments. This map is currently, I think we would see additional residential units in the zoning to the northeast on that, and those, I believe there's a tentative map in for those at this point. Next slide, please. Once again, the zoning is arterial commercial, the master plan land use designation is a special planning area. It is in the Renostead Joint Corridor Plan. That's in a unique space right now. The county has put forward to strike that particular document from their planning that has gone to Regional, that has been approved by Regional. The city of Reno has not done that, so our master plan currently references that document, and so we are subject to review that policy of that document for this project. Staff did analyze this towards the Renostead Corridor Plan and found it in substantial conformance with the policies that were written. As was described by the applicant, a special use permit is for that establishment of a mini warehouse storage unit in that AC zoning district, commercial development adjacent to residential zoning, and grading results in fills of greater than ten feet in height. Next slide, please. So as we look at that zoning, you can see the very distinct FF6 to the north, and then the MF-14 residential zoning to the west of the project site. To the east, we have a small sliver of PED, and then we see that community commercial zoning, and as we move towards the, as we anticipate out towards the freeway, we see additional AC zoning. One of the conditions that staff does recommend is to limit the sign to the community commercial standard, which would be similar to what is applied to the Walmart, the community commercials, and then would have, would anticipate to have fewer impacts on those surrounding residential units. Next slide, please. If we look at the site plan, we can go through several things. The access is off Sky Vista, they have a two-point access coming into a single point of controlled entry. Their parking is associated up in that front area, they meet the current standards for parking. We're also seeing emergency access that will be gated full-time, but does provide an additional access to that site in case of emergency. We look at the landscape and walls is proposed. I think the applicant did a good job of, the applicant representatives did a good job of sort of defining the, how they were moving forward with their plan to reduce those overall site impacts through those rockery walls facing the residential unit, to providing additional walling that will overall reduce grading impacts and those site impacts associated with that. It's proposed, we're seeing full landscape around the site, offering screening and buffering. We do see the stormwater retention off to the northwest portion of that. As per many of the sites in North Valleys now, there is a condition that would require that to be built to a one point three to one, offering that extra stormwater storage in that area. You can see the drainage does run to the north of the project site, they have not, there's no proposed grading or impact to that drainage, so we don't anticipate any additional impact on that. All sites coming off solid surfaces will go to that storm drain. The surrounding grades down through the drainage will grade naturally as they would. We'd also anticipate a disturbed areas, we'd see revegetation of those areas, and would be supportive of a natural feed system in that. Next slide, please. So just a little bit closer to look at the grading. As was mentioned, the applicants worked with staff to reduce those overall grading impacts that we're seeing. The site is very unique in that we see Sky Vista coming down that site, slips off to that drainage rather aggressively, so they will be filling that backside. Really, from our roadway and that, we aren't anticipating any visual impact, there's kind of, there's a wall there, and the project sits down within the site. That is consistent, along with the landscaping, a number of other features with that Renostead Joint Corridor Plan. One thing that we should talk about is access, pedestrian access to the site. There is, currently, RTC will be looking in the future to move Sky Vista up to four lanes. That would anticipate to incorporate a park strip and a sidewalk in that area. We have worked with the applicant to work out a condition so that we are not replacing sidewalk or there, and not providing that connectivity prior to RTC doing that and that having to be removed. That condition is condition eight, or let's see, condition eight, we would require them prior to a CFO to construct a four-foot sidewalk down there. The applicant has worked with us a little bit more since then, they had some concerns that they could be subject to that and not be able to get that approval from RTC. So I would propose additional language that stated that as they move forward, if they cannot get that approval for RTC, and we know that there's a scheduled date for those improvements to happen, that we could move forward with a certificate of occupancy. Next slide, please. Finally, as we look at the elevations of the site, they're in a neutral or earth tone colors, blending with the natural area and supporting overall impact to the neighborhood. You can see the minimal signage that is being proposed, the large windows in the manager's quarters, which is often supported by our SECPED policies of visualization, be able to see in that. There is also an onsite manager, so we'll have twenty-four-hour security at the site, there will be someone at the site, living at the site, and that, once again, we're showing that single-point access. There is a unique condition on this site that normally we would look to have them connect to our sewage. The applicant's representative, it's kind of shown from a technical aspect where that makes it very difficult because of the low usage. We are anticipating a small efficiency unit for the manager on this, and the overall sewage, it wouldn't work through the pipes. Please reach out to their engineer to have a little bit more discussion on that one, but we have provided a condition that if the county says it's okay, and they can permit that, we would move forward to do that. Additionally, we have four conditions that provide dark-skies lighting and limit overall hull heights and a number of other things that will have, lessen those impacts on surrounding neighborhood. Overall, mini warehouse use is considered a low-impact use, we're seeing minimal traffic, minimal noise. We have the reduction of the hours of operation are clearly defined within the condition. We also have one additional condition, looking at that construction time, that limits those construction times to limit the overall impact on the surrounding property. So with the information that was proposed by the applicant and the conditions that as written, staff can make all applicable findings and does recommend approval of the project.
Thank you, Brooke.
I am available for questions if necessary.
Thank you. Commissioners, since it's a public hearing, can we have disclosures, disclosures, please? Commissioner Johnson?
I am familiar with the site, and I don't believe we received any emails on this, so...
Commissioner Marshall?
Same disclosures.
Mr. Munoz?
Same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, I spoke with the applicant's representative and familiar with the site.
And Commissioner Velto?
Commissioner Velto, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Taylor, I visited the site.
Michelle, this is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment or voicemails that we need to share?
As of 5:00 PM, we had not received any public comment or voicemails on this item.
Okay, thank you. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant or staff.
Madam Chair, I have a question, and just a clarification. Brooke, on condition number eight, I'm a little unclear as to how that condition can be met and how the, you know, in the scenario that you described. So if they're, I guess my concern is I don't want to have a situation where, you know, the applicant goes in, builds a four-foot sidewalk, and then, you know, three months later, or four months later, RTC comes in and, you know, rips the whole thing out and puts in a, you know, the curb gutter sidewalk scenario. I mean, what, what kind of flexibility or additional thought has gone into that condition to avoid that scenario or a scenario where the applicant's kind of being held hostage until the sidewalk is built?
Certainly. I think, I think if we add to the bottom of the current condition that ultimately the project's certificate of occupancy may be issued if the RTC determines in writing that it is not feasible for the applicant to construct a temporary AC sidewalk because of RTC's construction schedule. So that basically allows them to get out from RTC's requirement if RTC states that it's okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure that was my only question.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Munoz. Just a quick question for the developer. So I visited the site this afternoon and noticed there's a large drainage area that goes from the west side of the road and goes underneath the road and then travels right through the middle of the proposed project area. How is that going to be negotiated? What's, what's the whole way that that drainage is going to work? Because up here in Lemon Valley, drainage is probably one of our biggest issues in the wintertime or in flood season.
Right. So the, that developable area that we've been talking about that's to be disturbed, that totally misses, it's totally out of those drainage ways. And then there's a, on that, one specifically mentioned on that side, there is a relocatable drainage easement for that, so it, it will stay on that west side of the project there. So it's been designed to not impact any of the drainage ways on, on both those, there's one on the east and one on the west side. I don't know if I can, I can try to pull up that drainage plan, but yes, we are certainly aware of them and have stayed completely out of them so that they're not impacted.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Marshall?
Brooke, can we walk through condition 12? You mentioned it in your, in your presentation, it's the signage. And particularly, what, are they allowed any signs other than signs that, I don't, I don't, I've forgotten all my sign lingo, but signs on the building? There was no, there was no signage planned that indicated any, you know, other sign, monument sign, or, you know, pole sign or anything else? Is that, is that, is that what CC limits them to?
No. So they did not propose a full sign package. They show their, their elevation that has a small area for a sign. But staff, looking what we did, so they, they have their AC zone, which is one of our higher, as far as signage, it's one of our higher zonings in the, what is allowed in that AC zone. And so we're looking at, at kind of some reduced overall pole height, some other reduced signs, some lighting situations. Additionally, the, the prior commission of dark skies would limit some of the, the overall height, or excuse me, the overall lighting of the sign.
Yeah, I guess in making the residential adjacency findings, you know, the main entrance is, you know, a butt-up basically against the, the residentially-zoned area to the northeast.
Yes.
And without any sort of significant signage, I think, you know, the lighting seems controlled, the, you know, the, the effects from noise, et cetera. But if we're looking at tower signs, and they're centered on that, you know, where the, near where the entrance is, I guess I'm a little concerned that we don't have anything that will enable me to make a finding that any signs that do come forward in the future won't, you know, will be consistent with that residential adjacency right there. So what, is it CC enough, or can we, you know, say that they have to be no higher than, you know, the, the tree height? Or something that keeps, keeps the signs down low so they're not visible from the adjacent neighborhood?
Sure. I think maybe an easy way to solve it would be to go to the neighborhood commercial zoning, which would limit them to a monument sign of only eight feet in height. And then they can have 60 square feet on that monument. And then there would be no illumination, or illumination would have to be indirect, and then no flashing or animated signs would be allowed. Because that would be, we could further reduce that if, if that was the decision of this vision.
Moves downs, is that okay with you guys?
I don't have a concern with that. I think that's fine, but the residential adjacency standards do include that there's no signage on the rear of the building that's adjacent to the single-family signage, and then also not internally illuminated. So I think your concerns are met with those residential adjacency standards, that we could meet with signage. Also, too, with that NC zoning designations, I haven't reviewed them, but I, I think they should be okay. The way you described it, Brooke, should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. So Brooke, can you go over or explain a little bit more the buffer between the residential neighborhood and I think it's the north, northern end of the warehouse? I see that there's some proposed plans or conceptual plans for trees, and I thought I heard something about a rock wall, but I just need a little bit more comfort with that bumper there where those houses are being built.
So the way it's currently designed, they are setbacks from their required setbacks even further. I believe it's approximately 50 or more feet, and the applicant's representative could confirm that. They are putting that rockery wall, which will limit the overall impacts of grading and the impact there, and also would be visually appealing. And then we're seeing a rise that's happening there, and so we're seeing the units sit above the residential. And there are no windows or anything that would cause privacy issues off to the related residential units. Additionally, what we see is a setback off of the residential unit that would further increase the distance between the dwelling unit and the actual mini warehouse.
Okay. And you're, you're comfortable that that meets the residential adjacency standards?
Yes. From our initial analysis and looking at the plan, it would beat the residential standards or exceed those standards.
Okay. Commissioners, questions? Other questions for the applicant or staff before we move into discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Munoz, real quick question. From what I'm looking at the property and from knowing the area, maybe this is for Brooke, and isn't the houses that are being built, now they're, they're literally hundreds of yards away, but even when that's built out, the way the drainage ditch goes there on the north side of the property, I don't believe there's going to be anything that's going to be close to that backside where those walls are, and they're, they're proposing that wall. Can you correct me if I'm wrong?
No, you're, you're correct there. There is that additional drainage on the west side, which is going to further increase the setback. And then as we see the residential units come in, between grade changes and distances, we don't anticipate there'll be a huge impact on the neighboring property.
I just wanted to add to that, too. You are correct, there is that drainage area, so it's at least a hundred-foot setback of that drainage area, and then also the rockery walls and landscaping to further screen.
Commissioners, discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Munoz. Living up here in the area, we are thirsting for businesses. And this may not be exactly what might, would be my first choice for a business up here because we're really starving for restaurants, more places to shop and things like that. Any developments commercial up here right now outside of a gigantic warehouse, from my point of view, is needed. So I, I do appreciate this project.
Other commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion. If Commissioner Munoz isn't, I'll defer to him.
Okay. In case number LDC 21-00002, based upon compliance with the applicable findings and the changes to condition eight to add the language that Brooke suggested, and with the suggested change to neighborhood commercial requirements for the signage, I can make those findings and move to approve the special use permit subject to those conditions.
Commissioner Munoz, I second the motion.
Great, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Michelle, will you please take a vote?
Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
John Marshall?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Alex Velto?
Yes.
Great, motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Thank you. And as a procedural question, Louis Carriola is here for the next item. Do you want me to log out as me and have him come back on as him? Or, or do you want me to leave it?
Turn my mic off?
You can stay there.
No, Jeff did, to double-check it, so Jeff, it was not the right thing to do.
Brooke, I think we can hear you.
Yeah. Karen, you, you can just leave it on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. To item 5.3, this is case number LDC 20-00061, Pine Street Town Homes. Michelle, do we have a presentation from the applicant, please?
Yes, we'll get it for you just one moment.
Thank you.
Most, you have 15 minutes to present your project.
All right.
Just let us know when you want us to advance the screen, okay?
Okay. My mistake, I was trying to get through the shared screen. Snap through, but if you've already got the PowerPoint up, we can work together on this. Louis Carriola from Manhard Consulting, presenting on behalf of the applicant Ryder Homes. I believe Steve Thompson from Ryder Homes will be joining us electronically as well. I know Michelle confirmed his registration earlier. So we can move to next slide, please? So the city map demonstrates the central location of this project within downtown Reno, generally located south of the Chucky River and east of South Virginia Street. Next slide, please. More specifically, the project is within the boundaries of four two-way streets, Pine Street on the north, Ryland Street in the south, River Rock to the, street to the east, and Sinclair Street to the west. The entire project area is 1.5 acres, over 10 parcels, all with common ownership by Ryder Homes. You'll note on the east side, there is a single parcel that is not a part of the project. That site includes a single-family home with access off of River Rock Street, and I believe six units of apartments with the primary access off of an existing public alley. You also note the alley adjacent to the not a part parcel. Next slide. The map's plan designation for not just the project area, but all these surrounding parcels is downtown mixed-use. Next, please. The zoning is mixed-use, and more specifically, the California Avenue District of the downtown Reno Regional Center Overlay Zoning District. As I'm sure you're all aware, this overlay district encompasses the most urban and dense development within northern Nevada. Next slide, please. The existing conditions include, most prominently, a parking lot that stretches across the site from north to south. Here, the, the photo is from Ryland Street looking across that parking lot at the center center, City Center Apartments with their frontage on Pine Street. The sidewalks, as this slide and the next slide will demonstrate, are of varying quality. The Sinclair Street sidewalk is in relatively new condition. Some of the other sidewalks are a bit older and deteriorated with some cracking curb cuts and pavements. Next slide, please. Single-family homes and I believe some duplexes are the bulk of the existing development. My understanding is that Ryder Homes has all of the tenants on month-to-month leases. Next slide. This is the actual proposal for the tenanted map. Forty-eight parcels for 48 single-family home townhomes, and one common area parcel that would be managed and owned by an HOA. The primary access for the garages, each, each unit has a garage, will be off of three newly-created private alleyways. The easternmost alleyway would be a reorientation of the aforementioned public alleyway. All three alleyways will be 21 feet wide in width. They'll be paved and have concrete alley gutters. The proposed townhomes are all three stories and are below the maximum allowed height of 45 feet in the district. I believe they're, they're proposed at around 40 feet, under 40 feet, actually. And the floor plans range in size from just over 1,300 square feet to over 2,000 square feet. I do want to take advantage of this slide to comment on an inconsistency between the submittal material and Kyle's staff report and the actual floor plan that are now ... are now part of your package. Uh, just sort of a, a timing issue, uh, in that Kyle was, was gracious in allowing us a little extra time to submit updated floor plans and elevations, and there's been a, a modification to the smaller floor plan in, in the, in the proposal, so that there's only one garage stall within seventeen of the smaller units. So the staff report mentioned ninety-six garage spaces provided, there are actually seventy-nine garage spaces provided. Uh, and while we're on that topic, I, I think it's important to note, the requirement in the DRC for these types of infill developments, again, w- within these urban environments of, of Reno, is only for one garage, one parking stall per unit. And of course, with forty-eight units, w- we're well in excess, providing seventy-nine units. Uh, additionally, all four or all, three of the four, I apologize, Pine Street, Sinclair Street, and Ryland Street will have on-street parking available as well. And next slide. Finally, the, these are the elevations, um, the, the floor plans and, and elevations, again, were submitted, uh, a little bit later, uh, but these are, these are great-looking urban, uh, units, right? With, with masonry and, and wood accents, and I, I think this would meet the intent to be, the intended type of development that the DRC is, is seeking. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll conclude my presentation, and of course, I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you. Do we have a presentation from staff or Kyle?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Kyle Chisholm, as a commentator for the record, can you all hear me? When not, good, thank you. Um, having some technical difficulties on my computer tonight. Um, so let me see if I can, through my screen, or, I don't know, Michelle, if you would mind pulling that up for me?
Yes, we'll bring it up, just one moment, please.
Sometimes that's just easier. While Michelle's working on that, oh, there we go. Let's see, get a next slide, Michelle, please. Okay, so the applicant's representative did a good job outlining the, uh, given an overview of the project, um, covered many of the things I wanted to talk about, but, um, primarily, uh, this, this is that block that you just saw between Sinclair, Pine, Ryland, excuse my typo there, and River Rock Street, um, you know, the new downtown Reno Regional Center and the California Avenue District. It's the request for a tentative map for forty-eight lots, townhome subdivisions. Just want to emphasize that the, the townhome use is allowed by right in this zone, and this, this request is strictly for a subdivision map, there's no special use permit associated with it. Next slide, please, Michelle. Um, again, just a vicinity map, kind of showing the, um, highlight of the area. Next slide, please, Michelle. Um, here you have the site plan, uh, proposed site plan. Um, as Louis mentioned, there is one, uh, the, the applicant is the developer owner of the, basically the entire block with the exception of one parcel that's kind of outlined on your screen on the, on, on the right, um, and that's two fifty River Rock Street. The, the forty-eight units are primarily accessed, as, as Louis mentioned, from the, uh, three private alleys, uh, that bisect the site between Pine and Ryland. The majority of all these, uh, parking, uh, is provided on indoor garages, private garages, and they're accessed from those alleys with the exception of four units on River Rock Street that are accessed via standard driveways from, from River Rock. Um, there was a condition of approval proposed, and this is not abnormal for townhome-type subdivisions as, as we've seen in the past, but then when they have shorter driveways that don't meet standards because of, um, um, just to kind of, as a precautionary, uh, to keep cars from, vehicles from parking in those driveways, the condition was recommended to require signage that, uh, restricts, uh, those units from not parking in the driveways, because they would over, likely overhang into the driveway. Uh, next slide, please, Michelle. Um, here you have a landscape plan, so just like with any, um, uh, townhome map, uh, it, it includes common areas that are co- uh, controlled and maintained by a common association. Um, as you see here, uh, you see all the common areas here shaded in green, uh, street trees along, uh, the street frontages, um, and I'll get into the street trees in just a second, but just wanted to give you kind of a prettier picture of what the landscape is proposed to look like. Um, next slide, please, Michelle. Um, so one of the conditions of approval is to recommend that detached sidewalks with parkway trips be provided along Pine and Ryland Street and not, uh, the other two, River Rock and Sinclair, and the reason being is, uh, for consistency with the, uh, existing street scape along those streets. And I provided just a couple of pictures, like that top picture there, you can see there, along the project frontage, there's already detached sidewalks and parkways along, along those two streets, on both sides of the street, and for the majority of those two streets, um, in this affinity, and so, um, just keeping what the, the, the street scape of the area, um, that condition was recommended. Um, the bottom picture and the top picture, you can see kind of the sur- some of the surrounding development. That, that five-story building, um, that's kind of orange colored, is directly across Pine Street from the subject site, um, and, uh, the proposed building is, uh, a two-and-a-half story building, thirty-nine, thirty-nine, just, just over thirty-nine feet in height, and, um, so the, that building height, the density, um, at just under thirty, unit and acre, is, is consistent with the downtown area and, and this, uh, development directly surrounding the site. Uh, next, uh, slide, please. Um, again, some architecture, as, as you just saw from the previous, uh, pictures, you know, the apartments directly across the street, um, are similar nature, pop-out, similar type of ar- uh, architecture, it's kind of a tiered, best architecture, um, with a variety of materials, um, balconies and so on. Um, you can see, uh, from this picture, could, uh, pedestrian access is primarily provided directly to sidewalks and the street frontages with, uh, you know, vehicle access towards the center of the site, um, which is what is desired for this type of development. Um, next slide, please. Um, I did want to just, a point of clarity, what Louis said, the, uh, in regards to the parking, um, uh, this is in the California Avenue District of downtown, and actually, um, this specific district code allows the developer or the property owner to determine the parking rate, um, and, and so the one unit per, or the one street per unit is actually at, at, for the entire downtown area except for the California Avenue District, which allows, um, the property owner pretty much to set the parking rate. Um, that's in code right now, and so, um, with that, the, the applicant has provided more parking than is, uh, or I shouldn't say more parking, but it has provided a, an ample amount of parking, um, with the, uh, the majority of the units being two-car garages. I don't foresee a lot of, um, trickle over onto the adjacent streets, even if these units are in an urban area downtown. Um, two fifty River Rock Street, the, the property that's not associated with this, um, I just want, and, uh, a quick clarification on that, in the staff report, I, um, mentioned that there was a single-family residence, and it came to my attention after the fact, I must have been confused, but there's, it's actually a multifamily, uh, parcel with eight units. The public alley, um, will need to be abandoned to accommodate the development as proposed, um, likely, um, which is why the, or, or at minimum, the, uh, the abandonment or relocation of that alley will need to occur, occur to, uh, to accommodate this development as proposed right now. Um, perpetual access is being provided to that property that is not a part of the request at two fifty River Rock, um, via a new twenty-foot, one-foot-wide, uh, private alley that will be owned, um, if the abandonment is approved, will be owned and maintained by the, um, association. Um, and so the, with that, um, staff was able to meet all the applicable findings and recommend that the planning commission approve the project. Just one more thing, I, I skipped the top bullet. Um, since this PowerPoint was written, I got a couple more, um, comments, and so I think all in all, I had four, uh, public commenters, uh, contact me in one way or another, and, which have all been forwarded to this mission, and all of them have been opposed to the project for various reasons, and I kind of highlighted some of those in there. I tried to address most of them with my presentation, but, um, anyway, I, uh, am available for any questions. Um, I guess we go to the next slide, Michelle.
Thanks, Kyle. Um, commissioners, can we have disclosures, please? It's beginning with Commissioner Marshall.
I'm familiar with the site and read the email.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, uh, familiar with the site, received and read emails and spoke with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Munoz?
Uh, I visited the site and read the emails.
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, also visited the site and read the emails.
Commissioner Veltou?
Uh, Commissioner Veltou, I visited the site and I also read emails.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Michelle, do we have, um, any public comment for this item?
So prior to 5:00 PM, all public comment was forwarded to you. We did receive one voicemail that we will play for you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Joseph Michael Silveira. I'm calling on behalf of case number LDC two zero dash zero 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 six one, Pine Street Town Homes. Um, my concern is that we don't have a proper, uh, mass transit system here, and, uh, even if we did, it wouldn't matter, because in that area, there's not enough parking during major events, and it becomes an issue for me to deal with my father, who lives catty-corner to that project, and, um, uh, trying to deal with, uh, bringing stuff in for him as a disabled veteran, becomes an issue during those times. Um, so we need to stop having apartment complexes that do not have their own parking. Um, the fact is, these organizations are very wealthy, they're building this, and there's absolutely no reason that they couldn't afford to have less units and have actual proper parking, rather than having it be an issue for citizens like myself here. Um, I just don't want this to turn into like over by the college where, uh, they eventually just gave all the street parking to the houses. Um, that, that wasn't a good solution, so, uh, thank you for your time.
Okay, is that, are those all the voicemails?
Yes.
Is that the only voicemail?
Yes, if we received any public comment after 5:00 PM, we will forward them to you, and we will add them to the record.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. We will close public comment now and, um, bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant or staff, please.
Commissioner Munoz, I, I have a question, and this is probably going to be for staff, I don't know who else to direct it to, but we've, we've had this question several times in, uh, other projects. From what we're getting from Washoe County Schools, there's, what, what the, what this says is forty-eight townhomes, and Worcester High is going to see an increase of one student, uh, one student at Booth Elementary and one student at Bond Middle School. I don't know who can directly, um, address this, but I don't understand how we're having forty-eight new townhomes come in and only three students generated out of this, or where they're getting their numbers from. I know it was asked last week, and I believe, or, excuse me, last meeting, in the meeting before that, we're getting numbers like this, and we still have zero clarification on that. So, is anybody willing to, um, or, or capable of explaining that to us?
Just kidding. Uh, for the record, Angela Foose, Acting CED Director, I did follow up with the school district, and I'm going to forward you, um, a string of emails that I got in response. The, the quick version to this is that they have a, a mathematical system, and it's based on the type of housing product, meaning is it an apartment, is it a townhome, is it a single-family, and the size of that unit. So that's one of the, the big factors they look at. The second is the location. Um, they, they have a demographic study, and this is, you know, something that they've been working on for, for years and decades, and so based on where it's located, the type of housing product, um, the size of that housing product, they have statistical data to show how many kids they anticipate generating. Um, they also look at the timing, so it's not like when it's first opened, that's the only impact you're going to have to the schools. They factor it out over the course of, I think they said twenty years. So as kids start, you know, maybe a, a young family moves in, those kids start at elementary school. Within the next five years, maybe they're in middle school, and then another couple years, they're in high school. So they take all of that into consideration when they come up with their student generation numbers. But, um, they did want to highlight that it's not something that they just make up, it truly is based on statistical, demographic, and geographic area that they've been charting over the course of years and years. Um, so they continue to update it as their student numbers are going up and down. I don't know if any of you followed recently, it looks like our, our student population numbers actually went down this year. Um, no surprise, because a lot of kids, I think, dropped out of the school district to find alternative schools because of COVID. Um, so that will impact their student generation numbers moving forward for next year. So, I will forward you some of that specific detail, because a lot of it's very technical, but that way you guys can have a better idea. But, um, big picture is, is they, they have a mathematical formula that they use, and it's based on a lot of different factors, and it, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So that's why one time you get a, a townhome project that generates three kids, and, and somewhere else you may get the same townhome project that generates ten kids. Lot of different factors go into that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
Thank you. Uh, this is for Louis. It's good to see you in another context, Louis. Um, you mentioned that, uh, the current residents are in, uh, month-to-month leases. Is Ryder Homes providing any relocation assistance to them?
You know, I'm, Louis Carriola is on the record. I am joined by Steve Thompson, um, from Ryder Homes. I, I, I don't know the answer to that question, so I don't want to put that on the record. I, I do know Ryder Homes had a public outreach campaign, uh, prior to submission of, of the tenant map originally. Now, with COVID delays, admittedly, there, there's been some time, uh, so I'm not really sure I'm the person to comment on the details of anything that was done. So I, I'm not sure, maybe Steve has something to add?
Anything to add, Steve?
I think we lost Steve. Oh, there he is.
Steve was Ryder, can you hear me? I'm not getting audio.
Steve, you're barely, I, I can't, I can't hear him.
Yeah, I'm not, the audio's not working, I apologize.
It appears his mic isn't working. It appears his mic isn't working.
So is there a way that maybe you can communicate through Louis to answer the question?
Might have noticed just as I was lurking in Karen's presentation, Chris Baker from Menhart is lurking here during mine. So he's contacting Steve now. And, oh, here we go. Hi, Steve.
Hey, how's it going?
It's fine, I'm going to put you on right now. So Steve, you should be able to speak to them.
Yeah, we have not finalized the plan for relocation assistance, but we are working with our property management to come up with a plan for that.
Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioners, other questions?
I'm Chair Commissioner Johnson. I guess first question is for Kyle. I'm trying to understand, so I read that the project is going to have eight-foot wide sidewalks as a part of the project?
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, is that something that was just offered by the applicant? Or was that a requirement from staff? Because that seems more generous than what we have in the neighborhood.
It's a requirement for downtown, eight-foot sidewalk.
So is that eight-foot paving and then a parkway strip before the curb? Or does that eight-foot include the parkway strip and the paved area?
Great question. Theonics code is pretty unclear on that. Louis and I went back and forth on this quite a bit. And what we can't, it's, I don't want to say inconsistent, but we've applied it loosely in the past. And with an emphasis to try and be consistent with what's already surrounding the area. The eight-foot sidewalks is clear. Whether detached or attached sidewalks are required is not clear in code. And so, but the master plan policies are pretty clear in that we are, the desire to have detached sidewalks throughout the city. So it's been, we've been pushing for that. And with the streetscape surrounding the area, we were, staff was comfortable with the detached sidewalk on the two frontages that already have them and that are consistent along those streets. On the other two streets, there isn't. So it would be inconsistent. So Louis and I were agreeable upon that. Is that answered, Michelle?
Not really, but I get the gist of where you're going with that. I think that maybe Louis can fill me in a little bit in terms of what is being proposed.
I can, thank you, again, Louis Carriola. Kyle and I did discuss this at some length. And I do agree that the code doesn't give clear direction. Essentially, there's a requirement for a 12-foot setback in the California Avenue District to include eight feet of sidewalk and four feet of landscaping. What's not clear is whether or not the landscaping takes the form of a parkway strip between the curb and the sidewalk or potentially between the sidewalk and the structures. What we agreed upon was to match the longer street length of the project area. That would be the north and south Pine Street and Ryland Street with parkway strips. So the back of curb will include four feet of parkway and then eight feet of sidewalk. Those would match the opposite sides and existing development on both Pine and Ryland. On River Rock Street and Sinclair Street, there will be eight feet of sidewalk at the back of curb and then four feet of landscaping in addition to the perimeter landscaping for the project, again, matching the frontages on the opposite sides of River Rock Street and Sinclair Street.
Okay, thank you. I think the clarification was the full eight-foot of paving. So in front or in back of the parkway strip, I can appreciate what you're looking at there. Secondly, just I want to make sure, and Kyle, you can respond to this one, the clarification from some of the comments that came in about the existing alleyway access to the not-apart parcel on River Rock. You mentioned that there's an abandonment that would most likely be required. But am I understanding it correctly that any alley abandonment would be replaced with essentially a easement of alley access in the same location for the existing parcel that's not a part of the project?
Mostly correct, except that the new, and Louis can chime in to provide details. But from what I saw in the plan, the new, because, first of all, the new alley access is much wider than the existing alley. So it is going to be relocated somewhat and wider. And so exactly how the abandonment takes place and how, you know, that adjacent property owner gets, you know, a certain amount of property is being, is under review. We're still looking, and I'm not the staff person to find it out, but it is under review and that would be determined at the abandonment time. But the existing, or excuse me, the proposed alley is partially where the existing public alley is now.
So is there a need, and I guess it sounds like there's a number of moving parts for something like this, but is there a need, I guess, from planning commission standpoint, where we're actually looking at a tentative map that has an impact on three sides of an existing parcel, that we would need to require some kind of language in this tentative map approval that requires, you know, access to the backside of that parcel in perpetuity as a part of whatever tentative map is established?
I personally don't think that it's necessary. I think the abandonment alone and the fact that applicant has proposed this easement on their civil plans for perpetual access to that specific property, I believe that that takes care of that issue.
Okay, and since this is a tentative map, whatever the final map is would incorporate the same location based on whatever is eventually apparently approved as a part of the tentative map. Am I correct?
Yes, I mean, I mean, the only, I guess, the only way that the planning commission had a concern about the perpetual access is, I mean, you could modify the condition, I suppose, to just add on that perpetual access be provided to that parcel. I don't know.
I might be able to fill in some of the blanks.
That'd be great, Louis. I'm just making sure that we're covering, you know, it was a pretty frequent response we got from the public comment. I just want to make sure that we're addressing it with anything that we would be looking at moving forward here.
Of course. So to start, Kyle has already included a condition, condition eight, that we, as the applicant, would demonstrate that the public alley has been abandoned prior to recording the final map. The application for the abandonment has already been submitted. Staff has reviewed the abandonment and offered comments. We're going to be preparing revisions and I believe are looking to be on the agenda for the October 28 council meeting. As Kyle mentioned, the alleyways proposed, while all being private in the tentative map, also include a proposed public access easement for the easternmost alley, the alley that would replace the existing alleyway. Speaking of the existing alleyway, I think it's important to note that the existing alleyway on paper is only 13.65 feet wide with a good five feet of that approximately, already encumbered by structures. I think the actual drivable width is eight or nine feet at the most. It's unimproved, it's full of potholes and gravel. The proposed new alleyway with, again, the public access easement to ensure the not-apart parcel has access is 21 feet wide, asphalt concrete paving and a concrete valley gutter. So I don't believe there's any way for us to record that final map without demonstrating, one, the abandonment of that alleyway, and then, two, meaning the proposed conditions in the tentative map of the private, of the public access easement.
Okay, that helps. I think I didn't realize that there was part, you know, there was an easement shown as a part of the tentative map submittal, and that was what I was getting at. So if that's in there, that answers the question. And then I just had one more, Madam Chair. With respect to the images that were shown, I guess I'm a little bit, you know, architecturally, I can appreciate what's going on there. I think it's certainly keeping with the neighborhood. But I'm a little bit concerned that the image that we've shown is the view that's going to be on Sinclair Street. But along both Ryland and Pine, we're going to be seeing the short end of the building with driveways in between. So the nice image that we're looking at, you're actually only going to see from one of the, potentially two, which would be the short sides of the project. And so from what I'm seeing, at least on the map, the drawings that were submitted with the project, I'm looking at essentially a flat line with two trees on the north and south sides of the project, which are, you know, the major elevations of the project. So I don't know, certainly not during either of the presentations, did we see anything for that. But I just want to make sure, and it's not really a condition of the project, but I'm trying to understand from the images that are being shown, it's really not a full representation of everything that we're going to see. So how has that architecture been looked at to wrap around and continue into the alleys? Because in the middle of the project, those two interesting elevations are going to be facing each other on either side of a private walkway. Louis, I think this is for you.
Thanks. Again, Louis Carriola. As you know, Steve Thompson having a little bit of difficulty patching in here. So he's been texting us. And we can put this on the record that the architects are actively working on enhancing the side views of the roads of townhomes. As you're correcting in pointing out, the Pine Street and Ryland Street frontages will not have those park strips and that extensive landscaping. However, the entire development is meant to have a consistent theme of high quality and maintained product. So while these were conceptual in nature and did include the park strip, I think that's the only real difference between what is intended and what you're seeing in the conceptual elevations. So again, on the record, the landscape plan is intended to be enhanced and be consistent around the entire perimeter of the project.
It's the architecture.
And the architecture, of course.
All right, thank you, Louis, appreciate that. Madam Chair, no further questions.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, I could follow up on Commissioner Johnson's question. I think it's a good one and something that I didn't really pick up on initially. So I'm glad he did. And if I could just kind of forward that on to Kyle to get your thoughts on that. Is there anything, I mean, are we being consistent here with our master plan and code if we're not providing that, you know, window and activity on those major street frontages there?
Commissioner Austin Calso, Assistant, kind of for the record. In my eye, this is kind of like a you can't have your cake and eat it too type of situation in that we were really, the design is to emphasize architecture of the building and not have garages oriented towards the street. And so by providing the alleys and kind of the design the way they did, that's what we got. We have buildings that are going to be, that are really.
Kyle, so Kyle, your answer is that the design that you're looking at and what was submitted is consistent with the code?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to Commissioner Marshall. This is for the applicant, probably. How many residents are there currently? Or how many tenants will be displaced?
Louis Carriola, again, speaking on behalf of Steve Thompson. The number is 13 residents, we're told.
So when you, when the applicant says that they have a plan in place, what does, what is that? Is that an eviction letter plan? Or what does that look like?
I think maybe Chris Baker, planning manager at Menhart, is going to weigh in.
How is everyone? Chris Baker for the record. Sorry, texting with Steve here back and forth. So as you can imagine, the acquisition of these properties by Ryder Homes and the communication with the residents, and their leases are structured accordingly, has actually been transpiring for a number of years. We first started playing around with this site about five years ago and started doing layouts over two years ago. Ryder Homes has been in constant communication with the residents and gave them realistic expectations. As far as kind of the relocation plan, that's something that is currently in the works. I don't know that there's any, you know, I don't have any details of what that would include as far as, you know, if there's compensation of any sort. But I do know there is something in the works and there has been constant communication with the residents as far as the ultimate goal for the, for the project site.
And then my next question is, did you guys have a community meeting or a Zoom meeting?
You're told by staff that they were not being helped due to COVID. Yes. So is part of our application process, no. But Ryder Homes did have an outreach campaign prior to submittal. I'm not sure of the timing on that, though. Again, things were a bit delayed and dragged out.
What is the outreach campaign? Is that, again, is that just letters being mailed to people? Or I'm just not exactly sure what that looks like.
Again, that is with the tenants themselves.
Okay.
Again, all the comments that were received with the initial submittal of this were all positive in nature. And the site was designed to be sensitive to the surrounding properties provide, as you can see, quite an architecturally friendly street frontage. And Ryder Homes has been working with the not-apart property owner. There was actually some discussions about trying to acquire that and make that part of the property that fell through. So again, there has been communication. This definitely isn't something that just came about overnight. This has been in the works for quite some time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, other questions?
An architecturally friendly street frontage. And Ryder Homes has been working with the not-apart property owner. There was actually some discussions about trying to make that part of the property that fell through. So again, there has been communication.
Madam Chair, if I might, you know, I think this is the kind of intel project, again, that we like. There's, you know, there's some, some interesting points like Commissioner Johnson and Goward about, you know, the long side architecture and how that integrates. And, you know, I'm hopeful that we can see a product that is not just another, you know, series of blank walls down that side. But my major point actually is, as we get these projects that increase density and are building residential units within the core. units within the core, we, we need to, you know, they need to go hand in glove with increases in transit and, you know, the other facilities and amenities that ameliorate, you know, the impacts of lot, of potentially, you know, greater demand for a limited number of parking spaces. And I think we're going to be, you know, this is not really a comment on this project. It's a comment on, for us to be able to increase and continue, have continued success with kind of increased density projects like this, we really need to also, I'm sorry, urge the city to do what they can with RTC, et cetera, to provide those services that move people around without cars, that, you know, ameliorate some of the conditions that may be in here in the, in the short term, but hopefully won't exist in the long term. And I'm ready to make the motion if there's no other discussion.
Madam Chair, if I could just make one comment, and I'm going to bring this up on, at the meeting tomorrow, and we talked about our zoning code update. And I want to phrase this lightly. It's, you know, as planners, we're up against a challenge of demonstrating that density can be done well. And I'm saying that on behalf of the commission, on behalf of the city, and, you know, looking at Louis and Chris sitting in the conference room there. It's something that we want to do. It's something that we're advocating for as a city. And we should be striving to do the absolute best we can with these products to demonstrate to the community that density can look good, can function well, and it can provide all of the things that we're advocating for, walkability, transit, you know, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, all of that stuff. So, you know, saying that we're going to enhance the architecture, that's great. In our meeting tomorrow, I think we're going to have to take a look at our code and make sure that, you know, we do have the tools in our toolbox to make sure that, you know, this type of infill development really is the best thing. So I think it's a good product. I'm supporting it 100%. But Commissioner Johnson brings up a really good point.
Madam Chair, just because I was called out by Commissioner Gower, I'll weigh in as well. And I think, you know, but the, the point is, you know, on something like this, we, we have an elevation that has been presented to us that is, you know, is an architecturally interesting and well-thought-out image, but it's just that. It's, you know, it's an image. It's part of the conceptual plan. And, and Louis and Chris will, will acknowledge that. So I think that the idea and where I was getting at is that I want to make sure that that level of interest is wrapping the building because you're not going to see, you know, you're not going to see that everywhere. So I, I appreciate the, the support on that. I think the, you know, the, the project, as said, is a, is a good project. I think it's very appropriate for the area. It's actually, you know, lower in scale than the project immediately to the north of it. So I think, you know, some of the questions that seem to come up with respect to density, this does it in a, in a very thoughtful manner. But again, I think I just want to make sure that what we're seeing, you know, on the, the screen here and the, and the development is perpetuated throughout. And, and there's no, you know, it's a, it's a tentative map, so there's no findings that I have to make that I can easily point to with respect to it. But I think, you know, the discussion here has been good and the applicant and developer have certainly heard it. So again, I'm, I'm on the same boat. I'm supportive, completely supportive of the project and the, the approach, and just want it to, to be as visually pleasing in this part of our community as it can be. So, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll defer to Commissioner Marshall, who's nicely left his-
Well, I'll, I'll make a stab of motion in the matter of LDC 20-00061, Pine Street Townhomes, based on the finds and typical findings, I move to approve the tentative map, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Johnson, I will second that motion. I can also make all the findings.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay. Michelle, can you please take open?
Yes, Kathleen Taylor.
Yes.
John Marshall.
Yes.
Peter Gower. Peter?
Yes, sorry.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
And let the record show that Alex Valtto left at 8:11 PM.
Thank you. Motion carries. Good luck with your project. Thank you. Okay, guys, do, it's 8:30. Do you want to take a quick five-minute break, or should we power on? Keep moving, I hear. Okay, moving on to item 5.4, case number LDC 21-00006, Panther View Highlands. Michelle, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Yes, we will have Mike Raely on in just one moment. And we'll bring Nathan in as well.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me in this evening?
Can.
Great. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, here representing the project. Also on the Zoom call tonight is Jason Maroff, who is the property owner and project applicant. I'm going to share my screen and start a brief presentation, then I'll be available for questions and answers. All right. Is that visible to everybody? Great. The project site is located in Panther Valley. This, the scene map here, this shows the railroad spur that comes through Panther Valley. This is Rock Chuck Lane on the south and then Litton Drive that comes up into the project site. What we're requesting is a tentative map to allow for 61 single-family homes within the SF9 zone, as well as a special use permit to allow for cluster development and fills in excess of 10 feet. This slide shows some pictures of the existing conditions of the site. Obviously, it's vacant. There are homes up above to the north and east, as well as a long rock truck drive itself. There's a perception, I think, from some of, of the people that just think of the site that it's steep. However, as this slope analysis shows, it's really a very gradual slope to the north. It's the majority of the site, in fact, about 90% of it is 15% or less slope. So I wanted to include that slide to give you a little bit of reference on the slope. This, this slide shows the zoning, and I think, as I mentioned, zone SF9, I think it's important, if you look what joins our parcel, is primarily common areas that were dedicated with the adjoining subdivisions. So we really don't have any directly adjoining neighbors. Most of the adjoining parcels are anywhere, the closest parcel here, from parcel line to parcel line, about 40 feet, but the majority of the parcels are 100 to 200, even up to 300 feet away from the existing site. Just under 14 acres total, 61 total lots. Small slot is 3,740 square feet with 12,000 being the largest, for an average just under 6,000 square foot average lot size. With the cluster development allows us to preserve a significant amount of open space. Nearly a quarter of the site, 24%, is preserved as common area, and I'll get into that shortly in further in my presentation. This is the project site plan, and as you can see, if, if you were to superimpose this road with the adjoining properties, this road, the curvature, essentially mimics the properties directly to the east. So the north is to the right on this screen, to give you reference. And by clustering, we're able to preserve all this area of open space, which provides a significant buffer and essentially mimics that existing buffer and actually enhances it to screen the existing residents from the project site. It also provides the ability to put a trail system through here to provide the residents with some, you know, recreational activities. It incorporates our detention basin down along Rock Chuck. And I think if you look at the project design, we don't have any homes that front Rock Chuck to these existing homes. Instead, they'll get a nice new landscape buffer along Rock Chuck and a significant separation between existing homes and new homes within the site. Because of this infill, we thought that was important to protect kind of the existing conditions that are out there now. Once again, this is an infill development which supports numerous master plan policies. The, whoop, let me go back. The design is consistent with existing zoning and surrounding development patterns. The cluster development, which really, I think, is, is a good tool to use with the special use permit in this case, allows us to preserve 24% of the site as open space, and like I said, really enhance those buffers between new homes and those that exist to the, actually, in all directions, up to 300 feet on the east side. The existing homes, once again, along Rock Chuck are buffered by landscaping and enhanced streetscape. Traffic generated by the project is actually 45% less than what would trigger a traffic study. The overall traffic impacts will not change any existing levels of service within Panther Valley and really are not going to be noticeable in terms of the, the average driver, so to speak. If you've been out to visit the site and see that Rock Chuck Road is currently built to a half-street improvement, this project will essentially complete Rock Chuck to fill city standard, including curb gutter and sidewalk. We did hold a neighborhood meeting last week on September 8. We did that through Zoom, and we used the city same noticing list that went out for this meeting. So we noticed everybody within 750 feet and held a meeting. We had about nine or 10 attendees at that meeting, and I've listed kind of the big issues that came out of that meeting. Traffic concern, with only 61 units, the project essentially generates during the peak hour and a maximum of one trip per minute during peak hour. And people hear one trip per minute, and they think, oh, that's a lot of cars. But if, if you count to 60 in your head, you know, 1, 1,000, 2, 1,000, by the time you get to 60, that's when the next car comes. It's really a very minimal traffic impact to the existing roadway network. Like I said, far below what the city would consider for a full analysis. The other concern was access. There is an access easement in place to the North Star Ranch, Ranch Project to the north. The residents there have been very adamant that they do not want through traffic on that road, and we agree. That will be a gated secondary emergency access only. In fact, it will be gated at our project boundary as well as at the North Star Ranch Project. So that will only be available for emergency vehicles, should there be a fire or some other sort of emergency. The biggest concern we heard from the neighbors was views. And I know you received a couple of public comments. The views, once again, that cluster development was really, a kind of driving force of that was to protect the views, especially to the residents to the north, that really have the nice views of Mount Rose and, and some is a part of the downtown skyline. Generally speaking, our project sits well below the grade of those existing homes. It, it kind of climbs as you go to the north. Of course, if, if these houses blow, certainly you're going to see the houses, but you're looking over the top of them, generally speaking. So it will not impact the view shed to Mount Rose and the mountains that, that those homes enjoyed. And I, I understand that they paid a premium for those views. We will not be impacting that negatively. Once again, the clustering allows for buffering. That was another concern. I think many of the residents that were on the, the call the other night appreciated the fact that we were clustering in the central portion of the site and, and maintaining those existing buffers. The only other comments that came up were, were related to construction hours, which was explained the city will regulate those. There was concern that these would be stick-built homes and not modular homes. That is, that is the plan, that these will be comparable to the North Star Ranch and adjoining subdivision to the east in terms of architectural style and construction materials. There will be a homeowners association to maintain the common areas. We have landscapes, parkways along the proposed access road that will all be maintained by the homeowners association. There is a question related to phasing. We anticipate this would be completed in one to two, one to three phases, overall, with development beginning at the south side, working north. And questions related to drainage, we are retaining all the increased flows on site and will not be increasing, increasing any runoff from the site. Of course, this is in a different hydrographic basin than Swan Lake, so that will not impact some of the issues that have been experienced in the North Valley. With that, I will wrap up my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay, thank you. Nathan, do we have a presentation? You're muted.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, associate planner. It's good to see you all. Staff does compare with the information presented in the applicant's presentation. I did want to briefly highlight some additional information. Let me... All right, can we all see that?
Can. Look at you, Nathan.
All right, thanks so much. Again, Nathan Gilbert, for the record. As, as Mike said, we did, we did receive a few comments. Staff did receive one phone call, that's just a general inquiry on the project, and three email comments of concern, which were related to perceived impacts on the, on existing views, as Mike covered. The, um, the, yeah, general area, greater 300-acre area was annexed into the city in 2004, including the 13.8-acre project area. In 2019, a zone change was approved on the site from SF15 to SF9 to facilitate enhanced infill development. The North Ridge and North Star Ranch subdivisions to the north have been finalized, and both were similarly approved with special use permits for cluster development and cuts and fills, and are separated by deed-restricted and HOA-maintained open space parcels, as Mike mentioned. This map doesn't reflect our most recent mapping updates that reflects some line adjustments to, to, to highlight mapping errors. But this greater area to the north and west, as well as to the east, is all deed-restricted open space that was part of the original subdivisions that are adjacent to it. So again, the request is a tentative map to allow for 61 single-family lots in the SF9 zone, based on the allowable maximum density. 66 lots could, could ultimately be approved here. They're requesting 61, in addition to special use permits for cluster development and grading with fills in excess of 10 feet in depth. And those, the SGP triggers for fills over 10 feet covers roughly about 6% of the site in two areas located near the western and northwestern perimeters. The fills are minimal and will assist in reducing overall grading impacts and open space conservation with the cluster development. Some key conditions of approval were condition number five, requiring pedestrian access at the northern emergency vehicle gate for connectivity to the northern public right-of-way and subdivision. This does not allow for vehicular access. Vehicular access is only for emergencies. So this condition would just ensure greater pedestrian connectivity with the project design, consistent with master plan policies. Staff did receive comments from the Nevada Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. They identified a protected species that may potentially be in the broad, broad-based map located on the site. So they requested that a condition be added, that a mechanical survey occur on the site to take inventory of the, the species, forgive my Latin, Vesia liberi, to do a, do some general survey before any land disturbance has occurred and forward that to the Nevada Department of Conservation for review. Again, condition number nine, standard conditions limiting hours of construction, and conditions 10 through 11 are standard compatible grading conditions related to retaining walls and riprap treatments. With the listed conditions, staff does recommend approval, and we are available for any questions at the appropriate time.
Great. Thank you, Nathan. Commissioners, let's bring it back for some disclosures. Let's start with Commissioner Johnson. Let's start with Commissioner Johnson.
I previously visited the site and I spoke with the applicant's representative and read the emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Munoz.
I visited the site and read the emails.
Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, previously visited the site, received and read the emails and spoke with applicant's representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall.
Familiar with the site and read the emails.
Commissioner Taylor, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative and read and received emails. Michelle, this is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment or voicemail?
All public comment received was forwarded to you prior to 5:00 p.m. We did not receive any voicemail on this item.
Thank you very much. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant or staff, please.
Commissioner Munoz, I'll go first. So my background is in law enforcement and fire. Access into this, we're talking about the secondary access because that was brought up by some emails, and you're talking about a double gate. For law enforcement or fire to get through a double gate when there's an emergency situation brings up a big concern for mine. Also, the traffic study that was not conducted or was apparently not needed, being in this area numerous times, driving the roads, Chisholm Trail is going to be one of those in question, and then I believe Newport. Both of these roads are in absolute, or excuse me, more Newport than Chisholm, but is in absolute horrible condition. There's constantly being signs put up by the neighbors, spray painted on the sides of the road for people to slow down because it's such a bad area for speeders. Has the city looked into, or is there any improvements that are scheduled to be made for these roadways, or is it just going to be what it is? I know the developer said that they were going to finish out, I believe, was it, I'm sorry, I don't have my notes in front, Chisholm Trail, I believe, or whatever the main road is that's going to go right into the subdivision. Could you please touch on those first, the city and then the developer?
Thanks, Commissioner. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, associate planner. I'll touch on the traffic study requirements first. Yeah, the traffic study is required with 200 peak hour trips. As Mike mentioned, this is well below that. I think the highest is 61 peak hour trips. So no, also, no access study was required. I would have to defer to Mike Michelle as far as overall road maintenance and public works priority. I'm not familiar with the greater area to that end, and I think if Mike's available, he'll be able to answer that before we pass it on to the applicant's representative.
Hang on for a minute, guys. We're going to see if we can bring Mike Michelle into the meeting.
Good evening, Mike Michelle, engineering manager for the record. Commissioner, your question is really more directed to public works, and I would be more than happy to sit down with them and their maintenance folks and evaluate what could be done as far as the condition of the road and any additional signage that may be warranted.
Madam Chair, for the record, Mike Raely with Chris Corperson. If I can just add to that, I did speak with one gentleman that contacted me once he received the notice for the neighborhood meeting, is somewhat of a neighborhood activist that lives along Newport and is working with Councilwoman, informing that he's working with Councilwoman Weber and the Reno Fire Department to have speed humps put in on Newport to slow traffic. And he made that statement to me. I'm not familiar with the work he's done, but he did make that comment to me.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions?
It's Commissioner Marshall. I was just wondering if either Nathan or Mike can address Commissioner Munoz's first point, which was the double lock, double gating on the north end. Is there a reason why we need a double gate versus...
I'd be happy to address that. We had agreed to a double gate based on the request of the homeowners within the subdivision to the north. Those would both be strobe activated gates, so they would be like any other emergency gate that goes in. We would have no objection to a single gate. That, I believe, was, and Nathan can correct if wrong, but that was originally a request of the subdivision to the north.
Mike, I would concur with that. Staff doesn't have any preference. The access will have to meet all fire department standards, but provided they meet that, believe that that design was an accommodation for the neighbors.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, a question for staff. Nathan, you included a condition in there for the botany survey based on comments from Department of Conservation Natural Resources. RTC also submitted some comments, essentially recommending a park-and-ride lot. Were those considered? And if so, why wasn't a condition added for that, too?
Nathan Gilbert, for the record, given the limited number of single-family units in this subdivision, we didn't think that it was particularly warranted. However, you do have the RTC letter and can make an appropriate recommendation.
But it was staff's recommendation or based on your analysis of the project that it wasn't needed?
We didn't feel like that it was warranted, given the scope of the request.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, another quick question for Nathan with respect to the conditions. I'm looking at condition number four regarding some sewer flow monitoring. I know this one has come up before. Basically, and it seems like the answer is typically along the lines of we're not exactly sure what's going to happen, so we're conditioning that the applicant takes a look at it and makes sure that everything's working correctly. Is that, you know, do we have any existing issues up there? Are there some specific concerns, or is this more of a general condition that we're seeing here?
Nathan Gilbert, for the record, that's a condition that's actually code. We like to bring those to the attention if it's, you know, something that we don't want to miss. But that is a code condition, and so based on their design, high-level design parameters, it looks like that could be an issue of concern. And so the condition is requested a more detailed analysis. I mean, I guess a comparable analogy would be a traffic study saying one thing, taking a look at it with an actual traffic count, you know, as a comparison. And I think Mike Michelle could add more if you're looking for more information. But it's a code requirement, and speaking with engineering staff, they don't believe that that will be a concern, but want to make sure that it is with that enhanced study.
Okay, thank you. That basically answers my question, and the applicant hasn't indicated any issues with what's proposed there, so I just needed a little clarification on that. Thank you.
And just for the record, we are in concurrence with all the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Mike.
Nathan, other question on, when you're heading back out, and I think it's on Rock Truck Road, there is a yield sign there right now when you're heading out of the development. I was just wondering if there wasn't a traffic study, would that still remain a yield sign, or do you know?
I might have to defer that to Mike Michelle, but again, that the access study wasn't required, given the scope of development. I don't know if Mike has anything further to add on that, but...
Commissioner Taylor, this is Mike Michelle. It could very well be that a stop sign would be more warranted than a yield sign, and I'll make a point to go out and take a look at that. And if it is recommended, if it's recommended that it be changed to a stop sign, I'll have our maintenance folks do that.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that very much. Commissioners, other questions? Discussion?
I just wanted to raise two points, if I might. First, thank you to staff for including the bike and ped access on the, making sure that was available. I think that gets us back on the right path from that, you know, the previous multifamily that we were looking at that we shut down, so thank you for doing that. Then, the other comment really has to do with the school district's letter in this case, which, you know, is slightly, you know, a few more, 12 more units or 10 more units or something, and we've got numbers 12, 7, and 6 in terms of additional students. So I think this, you know, gives some credence to Commissioner Munoz's comments about, you know, some of these numbers that they are coming up with, even though they're using mathematical models, don't seem to jide well. But what troubles me more is trying to divine through their letter, what is the end result of their plans to expand and open a new school and relieve crowding? Where actually are we as a result of that in terms of capacity? It's not disclosed. So in order to make a finding that we will not be, you know, I mean, look at the numbers now, and they're almost, you know, except for O'Brien Middle School, they're all over 100% or close and will be in the out years. And I would, I guess I would like something that says in these letters that, okay, if we do these things and these things happen and that plan to happen, we'll bring these percentages down under 100%. So that's the kind of information I'd be looking for to facilitate and support a finding of providing sufficient public services. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Munoz, knowing the area actually quite well, I just, in good conscience without knowing what these roads are going to be, if they're going to be upgraded or changed, especially, I believe, Chisholm Trail down to Newton, especially Newton Lane, are really horrible roads. And in good conscience, I just can't pass this, not knowing what's going to happen on those areas and without getting a good answer tonight, just because of no fault of anybody's, I'm really having a hard time with this one, so...
Commissioner Munoz, is there something that you could follow up with, with Nathan or staff or Mike, that would give you some level of comfort?
Commissioners, I think without knowing what the updates or planned updates for these roads are, specifically Newport, I know that developers said that they're looking at putting in some speed bumps there. I can tell you from, like I said, being on this road numerous times and up towards Opal Station, which dumps out onto Golden Valley Road, the speed bumps don't make a difference. People use them as ramps. So that isn't sufficient for an answer for me of what's going to happen there. So without somebody being able to tell me what's going to happen there, I just in good conscience can't approve this or vote yes on it.
So, Mike, I'm going to ask you a question about what you know as far as other improvements that are scheduled within the area.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do know that there was a project approved last year down where, I believe it's Newport comes into Panther Drive, and I know they were conditioned to do some additional improvements. And speaking with the traffic engineer before we started this project, it was my understanding that Newport operates at a level of service C and that with the minimal amount of trips that we're adding, as I mentioned, at the peak hour, the PM, that's at the PM peak hour, it's less than one car per minute and far less than that in the AM peak, that there would be no change to the existing levels of service. So that roadway is actually operating at a full level of service above the acceptable level of service. So as far as the speeding, I, you know, I understand that that could be a concern on Newport. The majority of traffic from this would not be using, they would come down, I believe it's in Litten, that ultimately connects to Newport. So I don't think we would necessarily be contributing to those, that traffic that comes down from Opal Station. They're essentially taking a different route. I don't think this will have any noticeable impact to that. But with that said, we're well within the city parameters for traffic. There are, there is a process, as my understanding, underway with the neighborhood itself to have some traffic calming put in there, but that would not be something that the developer would be involved in. That's something that's already underway within the neighborhood itself.
Thanks. So Nathan, are all these city streets...
Yes, they're all city streets.
Is there a maintenance program that the city has for their city streets?
I would have to defer to Mike Michelle regarding public works maintenance programs.
Commissioner Taylor, there is a city maintenance program. I don't have the details at my disposal tonight as to what those entail for Panther Valley. Like I mentioned before, I would have to get with the public works staff and see what the plans are, but I can't offer any details tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I guess as a point of discussion, I understand where Commissioner Munoz is saying, and he's looking at basically traffic safety in the neighborhood. However, as is kind of pointed out, it's not, you know, it sounds like it's an existing condition that's there, and in terms of making the findings, I'm kind of looking at this project and the number of trips that are being added, which is, you know, kind of within the vicinity of this development and where it's going to come out and where from there everything's going to go. If we're looking at less than, less than one vehicle per minute during the peak hour, there's not a, the contributing factor to this and the concerns that we deal with from a traffic standpoint, I don't believe that this project is creating any of those issues. If there's existing issues on the roadway, my personal feeling is that the addition of this limited number of cars is not going to substantially change that. And I think, you know, if this is something that public works and city staff are going to look at in the broader picture, I certainly appreciate that and I hope that that gets taken care of. But from a discussion standpoint, I can't see how some, you know, the existing traffic, if we're not overburdening the streets with traffic, that we should be punitive to this project for some conditions that are completely outside of its control and not something that we would condition. So I certainly understand where Commissioner Munoz is coming from, and we certainly don't want to be, you know, further contributing to safety issues, but I think we've got a project here that's, you know, within, within the amount of units that were anticipated with the zoning and with the planning. And if the roadways aren't, you know, operating at too low of a service, that doesn't preclude me, I'm not, I don't have any issues making the finding with respect to the traffic on that. So just wanted to put that out there in terms of a discussion point.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other discussion items? Well, see, any hands or, um, muting?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, um, since the discussion part has ended, I'll, I'm willing to make a motion on the project.
Okay.
As soon as I pull up the right motion here, sorry. In the case of LDC 21-00006 Panther View Highlands, uh, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permits, subject to conditions. Uh, I can make all of the findings, and I guess the only question I would ask is if there's any reason for me to break that out into individual motions or if the proposed motion is written for all of them is acceptable.
Well, Carl, can you give us direction on that?
Yes, sorry for the delay. Yeah, I think that motion, uh, covers both the special use permits and the cuts and fills, the tentative now. So one motion, making all the findings is sufficient.
Thank you.
You have a second?
Commissioner Garo, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Michelle?
Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
John Marshall?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's a four, right, four to one? I'm not missing any, 41 votes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Okay, and I think you are up with number six, discussion on how public comments are being received and shared.
Good evening. For the record, Angela Foose, acting planning director, uh, no, acting CD director. I forget. So, what, what I'd like to do is, is take you through a couple slides. Um, I know we have a lot of public that watches these meetings and this was kind of intended for them as well as for you. So a lot of this is information that you've heard before, but I wanted to make sure that, um, the public that watches and is concerned about pub, public comment understands the big picture as well. So when we were first hit with COVID, um, we shut down all public meetings. And it was probably about a six-week timeframe where we didn't hold any public meetings. That was board meetings, commission meetings, technical advisory committees, no meetings period. Um, just as, as a, a point of information, we as a city operate about 50 different boards and commissions. So we, we have a lot of activities going on at all times. Through COVID, we have completely shut down in-person meetings for all of our boards and committees. What we've done is we've, we've converted that to a, what we call a Zoom webinar platform. Um, one thing that's different about these Zoom webinars is it takes a lot more staff time. And, and not so much from, from the planning or the, the admin team, but from our IT team. Um, they have to do all the background setting these up, they have to attend each of these meetings. So it's a lot more time intensive than we would have ever had to bring them in for any other project. As, as a point of reference, our, our planning commission meetings, Michelle typically runs the planning commission meetings, uh, from the computer side. Because we're holding these Zoom webinar meetings, we have to have an IT person here. So it's not just Michelle running the vaccine. Um, we also have somebody from IT who's here also attending all of these meetings. Thank you, Brian. Uh, as part of this process, one of the things that we've looked at is, is this budget. You know, we all know that COVID is impacting all of our budgets, governments especially, because we just don't have the revenue coming in, um, that we used to. So, back in May-June timeframe, um, the, the city took, um, a policy direction that they were going to put the majority of all of our boards and commissions on a temporary hiatus. And that was until October 1st. So there were probably about eight to 10 boards and commissions that are, um, required. For instance, planning commissions required per state law, um, our city council meeting is still required, and there's a handful of other committees, um, that are still technically required. So, we are still holding about eight to 10 of those different committees, again, all through Zoom or other online platforms. And every other board and committee is on hiatus until October 1st. And the, the idea was, let's see where we're at budget-wise, let's see where we're at COVID-wise. So here's where we're at, right? It's September, we're coming up to October 1st, um, we are working on our city budgets and trying to figure out, uh, what the impacts are gonna be and how we want to move forward. So those discussions are still taking place, um, both at the city council level and at our city management level. Fast forward to, um, when we had the riots at City Hall, and I just pulled some things off of some of the, the news stories that were, uh, that went public. And that happened, I believe, in June. And so that, that significantly impacted, um, how we operate at City Hall. We had to change the way we allow access to City Hall, we had to change the way we have security at City Hall. So with that as well, we started receiving, I would call it, um, some, some Zoom bombers, um, showing up during live public comments. And then the, the, the hard part about these Zoom meetings is you don't have to show your face. So while we have people that have to register, you have to plug in your name and your phone number and even an email address, it's very easy to come up with a fake name, phone number, and email address. And so what we had happen was, um, they were, these Zoom bombers were attending our city council meetings, uh, making bomb threats, um, you know, dropping a lot of inappropriate, uh, words and, and things that we don't allow at a normal, um, public hearing or city council meeting. So at that time, city council and the city manager's office made a decision that we are no longer holding live public comment. That's a decision that, that they have made, and it's for all of our boards and committees. So it starts at city council, um, but also filters down to us. And so the challenge that we have is, because we review projects, you know, this, this planning commission doesn't get involved at a policy level in decisions that, that the city makes. You know, you, you guys don't get involved in, um, how, how the police runs their force or how the fire runs their force. Um, unfortunately though, because it's, um, a live public comment situation where anyone can get access to bomber meetings, so to speak, Zoom bomber meetings, both again, the city council and the city manager's office made a citywide decision to no longer hold live public comment. So there's been a lot of questions as to, why haven't we found other ways to do live public comment? There's a lot of jurisdictions out there, we're all dealing with the same thing with COVID. How come they're providing live public comment and we can't? One thing that's unique about Reno is we don't just provide a, a Zoom platform, we call it a Zoom webinar platform, meaning, uh, we don't just send out one Zoom link and everyone can join that. We specifically send out a link and then you have to log into that link, fill out a form, and that gives you your own unique link, kind of like when you sign up for a webinar. So that, that's a little different than you would see in other jurisdictions. Um, we also have to tie that to a platform we call MinuteTrack. It's just an internal, um, ci, city software program that we use, but it helps to run our meetings. And then we also run everything live through a program called Sosu, which is, um, if you're watching our meetings on public TV or through YouTube, all of that is connected. So because we have all of these different platforms working together, we're kind of limited in our ability to do certain things. We have looked at a number of options. So how, how do we, um, do what some of these other jurisdictions are doing? The, the biggest thing that gets brought up is why don't we use a time delay? You know, like they do on the radio, where there's maybe a five-second or 10-second delay. Because we have these multiple different platforms, they're not all coordinated. So we're finding that, that that's not gonna work for our systems. Another challenge we found with that is that we'd have to bring in additional equipment and that would potentially then not give us the ability to run the, the Sosu, which provides that live YouTube feed, um, and, and our, our meeting feed that you can access on our website. We want to be transparent, and by not having that live YouTube feed, we feel that, that's, that's going against what we're trying to achieve. We've looked at upgrading our system, right, upgrading our technology. If we knew that truly this was gonna be a short-term situation, um, it would be one thing. But as we're seeing, this is turning into a much longer situation. I don't think, um, COVID's gonna go away anytime soon, nor do I think that we're gonna go back to having, um, open public meetings anytime soon. So we, we have looked at the cost of our technology. Unfortunately, because we have these multiple layers, um, it's not, it's not as easy as just bringing one new system in, because it has to be able to interact with our other systems. Otherwise, we're looking at a complete upgrade of, of everything we do when it comes to these public meetings. So, um, well, I'm not trying to give you excuses, I'm just trying to give you a, a, a feedback as to the things that the city has looked at, um, and understand that, see, these are the challenges that we're up against. The other thing that we've heard quite often is, why don't we just hit mute when we have these people that call and, and do our Zoom bombs? Um, you've probably seen a couple of the city council meetings where we tried, um, staff, we had IT staff, we have the city council there, again, we have, um, the city clerk, multiple people, ready to go, ready with their finger on the button to hit mute. And because all the systems have these different delays, you still get several seconds of beep, 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 things that they shouldn't be saying. Um, so, so hitting mute is, is not working for us, because it's still several seconds of, of people getting, um, explicit words in on the record and, and then that's for everyone to hear. So again, from a city council perspective, they said, shut it down, we're not doing it. Um, the city manager's office, again, shut it down, we're not doing it. So we are, we are kind of left with, how do we improve this, this situation? One thing I know that we've talked about is our public notice, public notice postcards. Um, I, I gave you two examples. One is what we were doing, you know, two to three months ago. We had to provide some additional language on our postcards, talking about COVID, um, talking about the fact that you could no longer attend a public meeting, but there's other ways that you could provide. The comments we were getting from the general public was, it's a lot of information, it's confusing, I don't know what this means. So we tried to simplify it and we basically, um, the bottom version is, is the latest and greatest, uh, round of, of template, um, now that we're sending out for our postcards. So it basically gives you a link if you want to find a, a meeting agenda or a staff report. And then it gives you four options for providing public comment. One is just if you want to do, um, snail mail, mail in a letter, we give you an address. Two is if you want to send an email, and that's what a lot of you get, because it's directed to the, the Reno planning commissioners. Uh, we also have a form online where you can go and fill out any, um, public comment, either on a, a city council agenda item or a planning commission agenda item. That form then gets transcribed and given to the planning commissioners. And then the, the other option is voicemail. We have a separate line set up where you can call and leave a message. That message has a software attached to it that gets transcribed and sent to you guys as an email. Um, what we just started doing today was a little different. And again, this is a, a, a process that's, that's going to continue to evolve over time. Um, so from this point forward, our game plan is to play all of the voice messages at the planning commission meetings. Um, most of these voice messages have come in prior to today, so they would have also been transcribed and given to you guys through email. But again, in an effort to try and be more transparent with the public, um, anyone that leaves a message on that line, that message will be played live at the planning commission meeting. Not live, we have to have a chance to actually hear it, but, um, it's played during the planning commission meeting. So the other thing that we've heard a lot about is, when are we gonna bring the NABs back? Um, as we talked about, all of our boards and commissions that are not mandatory have been put on hiatus. And so that, that drop-dead date is October 1st. Um, our, our city council and our managers are, are looking at ways to bring the NABs back, but safely. And again, looking at staff resources. You know, if this is going to cost us, um, you know, a significant amount of money, because we now have to pay overtime for every single meeting that we do, that's gonna impact the decisions that we have to make as a, as a city. But some of the things we are considering is holding meetings, um, NAB meetings through Zoom, that platform. Um, I know some of the city council members have started to hold their own town hall meetings, and those are led individually by the council members. So they are, um, kind of functioning a little differently. They're not talking specifically about, um, the thing, the same things that we would at NAB meetings. They're talking more globally about some of the things that are happening at, at, as, as part of the city as a whole and things within the neighborhood. Um, the other thing that we've, we've heard recently is nextdoor.com is another good avenue. And so the, the city does have the ability to provide information on the nextdoor.com platform. Um, so rather than us getting engaged in like a dialogue with the neighbors, it would be more informational. Where, for instance, if a project's coming in into a neighborhood, we can post a link to that project, the application itself, and then residents can view information that way. So the, the big thing we're trying to do is come up with creative ways that aren't going to financially impact us, um, but ways that we can be creative and get information out there. So that, that's where we're at today. Um, my, my hope is that I can, um, hear your feedback, um, and maybe offer up a suggestion for the group as a whole. Um, I think probably every planning commission meeting, you guys have expressed concerns about not having public comment. One suggestion is that you reach out to your electeds. Um, you know, they are, are tasked with a lot of decisions and this is something that, um, you know, if this is of concern, let them know. Um, I would also suggest writing an email. Um, send it to, to our current, um, city manager, uh, Jason Soto, and, and CC, all of the city council members. Let them know as planning commissioners, what are the struggles that you have with not having the live public comment or not having, um, in-person public comment? So, um, you know, y, y, you guys are the voice of the planning commission, so share that with me. I can pass that along to them as well. But again, feel free to, to kind of, um, take that activist role well, as well, and, and share that with the city manager and the city council members individually. So that's where we're at. Again, this is more of a discussion item. It's not an, an action item, but I am, um, happy to have a dialogue with you guys and, and answer any questions.
Angela? I liked the voicemails tonight. I thought that was helpful.
I did too. I think it, it actually, um, made a difference, right? I think it kind of gave you guys a little bit more voice, so to speak, rather than reading something in the mail. You can, you could hear, you know, what, what their concerns were through their voice and through their tone.
Yeah, I think the voicemail is nice, but my kind of question is, I mean, if they've already received it with a transcription and I think you can listen to it as well, I'm not certain if that, if that adds the critical function that we're looking for. Uh, I guess my question is, uh, when, when do you, um, thank you. When do you, uh, my iPad is, is about to die. Maybe you all want to thank that, but, um, when, when, when's the cutoff for the, for playing that? I mean, is it, you, you know, can there be actual, you know, is it five o'clock the day before?
No, we, in terms of the, the voice messages?
Yeah.
So we will take everything up until noon. Um, we do take all public comments and forward to them, everything to you guys up until 5:00 PM. But, um, we have to have the ability to listen to the voice message and make sure it's something that can be played on camera. So that cutoff is gonna be noon. Noon the day of the meeting.
Right, so it doesn't really provide that interactive, you know, they look, you know, the members of the public can see what the presentations are from the applicant and from staff and provide comment. So that, that, at least for me, that's what I was trying to figure out a way to, that's the, the missing link. You know, I think you guys are doing a great job in terms of helping people, you know, through, uh, you know, ma, making it possible for people to participate and watch. But it's that interaction that, um, I, I think a number of commissioners have identified is, is what's missing. Um, I do like hearing, you know, voices of the public, uh, particularly in their concerns, um, but it, but it's, um, not meaningful. I'm going to ask Carl if, has there been any, um, direction or has there been communication with the Nevada AG's OML unit to see whether or not, you, you, you know, uh, what, what they're saying about not having, um, you know, live public comment or the opportunity to provide? I know they've been trying to kick out some guidance on, on, uh, COVID-related issues.
No, we haven't had any feedback, um, from the AG's office, you know, on that issue. But, you know, I can reach out, up to them and, and see if there's any developments. If you're happy to do that and report that.
That'd be great, because also I think in addition to Angela, you know, to us providing feedback to the electeds, if, you know, I know that, uh, I've gotten blank stares from the AG's office when we say, oh, we don't have the money to, they say, you know, well, too bad, you gotta, you gotta meet the law, the, you know, the requirements of law. So, uh, you know, anyway, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Other comments or questions?
Chair, if I could, Angela, you didn't mention it, maybe, I haven't talked with Jeff, but Nevada chapter of the APA and the Northern section in particular, we are talking about, you know, kind of taking this piece on too and putting together some best practice type information collected from other jurisdictions and presenting that to the commission and potentially, you know, other boards and commissions throughout the state. Just kind of as an informational presentation. So I just wanted to let the commissioners know that we're working on that too as a chapter.
Great.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I do want to echo the comment that I did like the voicemail and the things. And maybe coming at it from the standpoint as Commissioner Marshall said, yeah, for us, we've already read it. But I think it's a critical component for the public themselves. Because I think what I hear is that they just don't feel like they're, you know, they're being heard, they're being paid attention to. And especially in light of now where, you know, we all make the comments about receiving the emails. We have a presentation that talks about the major things that we've heard. But, you know, there is a lot of nuance that comes from an actual public statement. And so I, I think it's a perception more than anything else. I think, I, I don't know that there's a good answer for how to do the public comment and I don't sense that there's a lot of appetite because of what had happened previously to, to, you know, open it up to a point where we lose control. But I do think that our meetings are better serving the public if we're either hearing their voices or even if there's some, you know, some of the transcriptions or the names that, you know, we hear they're part of the public record. Like all the comment is part of the public record, but where's the public record? What's the, you know, how do we, how do we make a bigger impact in terms of letting the public know that, hey, I got this postcard, I sent in my response and then there's, you know, they don't have a chance to watch the meeting and the next thing you know, we get an email two weeks later that says, hey, how did you guys vote on this? I, I don't know, I just, I like the idea of the voicemails. Even if we've heard them before, I would even be in favor of seeing a list of not just, you know, some of the people who wrote in, but actually it's, you know, part of the visual record as well that that's going on. I think it's just, you know, I don't, I don't know that there's an answer how to get people to physically be in our meetings and make their comments. But if we can actually have their physical comments be a part of the meeting and not just something that's alluded to or that they're just a statistic on one side of it or the other. Especially in, in when we start looking at like what we're going to be talking about tomorrow night. These are, these are hugely impactful things that we're talking about. You know, when we're talking about a Title 18 update or, you know, from city council's standpoint, when they're looking at all of the decisions that they're making that are funding and everything else. And to be doing it in the kind of thing where there's, there's no obvious, you know, feedback that's being presented from the public at those meetings. So I applaud the steps that we're taking and I think if anything, we just want to, we just want to be as transparent as possible that keeping everything live, you can see it live, but let's incorporate the fact that, oh yeah, I called in, left a message yesterday talking about, you know, this project. And then in our meeting, yeah, we read it, but it's actually being, you know, the voice is being heard on the presentation. So I like where we're going. I don't know what the solution is, but I think the more opportunity we can have to just give an actual physical manifestation of the fact that these voices and the public comments are being incorporated and being heard by, you know, both our commission and city council. And I would share these same views with, with all the council members that, you know, I think they should have their public comment include voicemails being run before them. I mean, I think that's something that is not just limited to us, so. And for goodness sake, bring back the NABS because how many called, how many comments have we had that say, hey, there's no NABS? How am I supposed to find out about this? So I get the issues with staffing, but if we truly want to be reaching out to the public, it's not just us in the council. It's got to be the NABS as well. So that's my feedback. Thanks for letting me in.
Thank you, Angela. Do we have a Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report? Commissioner Gower?
Can I, I'm sorry, could I just, I didn't realize you were going to shift quickly. I just wanted to make one last comment on the last agenda item. And that is, I'd rather change, exchange a few F-bombs for, you know, a live public comment. Just, that's just how I would weigh those things. But I know the city council weighed it differently, but those are my, that's kind of my two cents at last. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Hey, Carl, maybe I have another call question on that. Or Angela. Planning commission should mirror what city council is doing, right? You probably wouldn't have two different processes or two different public comments.
I think consistency is important at this point. So, you know, I'd like to get some direction from council with respect to being consistent. But I understand your position that planning commission is different and I understand, you know, Commissioner Marshall's statement that a few F-bombs, you know, we can deal with. So I get it, but I still think that being consistent and getting some direction from council would be appropriate.
Yeah, don't tell them that we have thicker skin or anything. Okay, I'm going to move on to item number seven. Good? Okay, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Gower?
Madam Chair, I have no updates. We haven't had a meeting recently and I don't think we have a meeting scheduled until at least next week at the earliest.
Okay, thank you. Angela, stop announcement?
Okay, a couple things. A couple weeks ago, you guys reviewed the Mount Rose Transfer Station zone change. I did want to provide an update that the applicant ended up continuing the zone change to city council. And so we are working with Councilwoman Duer and, and the applicant to try and do some outreach to the neighbors before that comes back for a zone change or however they're going to take that application. So that is, that's indefinitely continued. The other item that went to city council that was approved is the regional plan conformance with the master plan. We'd had a discussion, there were some changes that were brought up. Those changes were included from the planning commission to the city council. And so now that will be going to regional. So all of you that will, that sit on regional will be seeing that one more time. And then finally, the text amendment on the development agreement. So that went back to city council for a first reading. They'd reviewed it after it went to planning commission and made some significant changes. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up that at the end of the day, they, the way that it's written in the code today is what they would like to see move forward. The draft that had gone to planning commission had it, most of it was stricken or eliminated and really rewritten to be very, very minimal. So city council disagreed with that and they preferred to have it go back to the way that it's currently written in the zoning code. And a couple major changes. One is that you can move forward with the development agreement and you do not have to have a special use permit or a planned unit development or a project of regional significance be tied to it. The way it's written right now is you can't move forward with the development agreement unless it's attached to a project. So that, that's been changed. Now you can move forward with the development agreement without having an entitlement project attached to it. The other thing that they added was that you cannot use the development agreement as a tool to circumvent what would otherwise require an entitlement. So this is something you guys had brought up. There was concern that developers would use a development agreement as a tool to get out of doing maybe a special use permit or to get out of doing an entitlement that would have otherwise come before planning commission or city council. So city council added very specific language that you cannot use development agreements as a tool to circumvent the planning process. So with that now, we have to go for one more second reading and then it becomes part of the ordinance. And then we'll see if we get any development agreements moving forward. Those development agreements will go straight to city council. They will not go to planning commission, but they will be publicly noticed and they will be in the form of a public hearing. So it will still go to city council as a public hearing process. And that is it for my updates.
Thank you. Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items? I don't see any hands. I don't see anybody jumping up. Okay. I don't know if this is the right place, but Angela, I talked to you a little bit earlier about the new format of the Washoe County Health District's letter to us on projects. So I'm wondering if maybe you would just be able to give us some feedback at one time if they're going to be doing that for individual projects now or if they're going to lump them together like they did before, if that was a special case.
Yeah, I, I will follow up on that with district health. I don't know if any of you noticed, I think it was in one of the tentative maps that was before you tonight. It was a very long response letter from district health. Normally they give you one letter and it has five different projects, right? And kind of the same, same language in each of the projects. This letter had, I think it was two pages and had a lot more detail. It was a tentative map. So we don't typically see them go into that much detail on a tentative map. So there may be something unique about that project. But I'm going to follow up with district health and see if maybe they're just doing a different format or if that was just kind of a one-off, unique situation.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Moving on to item number 10. Michelle, do we have any public comments?
No, I did not receive any public comment for this item.
Do you have any voicemails?
No, I did not receive voicemails for this item either.
Thank you. Item number 11. Chairman?
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor?
Good night.
Good night, everybody, thank you so much.
Good night, everyone.